Something to open up the meeting? We don't have any mail or bills that we have to go through, do we?
Nope.
Okay, do we have anything for anybody for our open forum? Someday somebody's gonna add something. So we have the, I have to read the public, we have a public hearing for Zero Point Development, the LLC, the modification to approved Osgood Fitzgerald Road ground mounted solar site plan to add an energy storage system. In accordance with sections MGL, Chapter 41, Section 81P in the Cheltenham Planning Board zoning bylaws, Section 3.2.1 and 7.1.4, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, in the planning board office in the George Seaman King Street Building on 37 Main Street, Cheltenham, Mass. On the application of Zero Point Development six Park Ave, West River, Mass., requesting approval of a site plan modification to add battery storage to an existing ground mounted solar array. The proposed battery storage location will be next to the existing electrical equipment as shown on plans by DC Engineering last revised January 28th. The proposed subdivision is located at 5 Osgood Road and 11 Fitzgerald Road, Cheltenham, Mass. The properties contain a combined total of approximately 156 acres. The property IDs are assessors map 16, Block A, parcels 2, 5, and 5.1 in our zoned agricultural. Copies of the site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board office and the town clerk's office during regular business hours. Okay, Randy, I'll let you open the discussion.
Okay, these, um, the solar array at Osgood Fitzgerald Road was approved by the planning board previously and after discussion with Mark Bobrowski this past year that determined that to add the battery storage system, they would be required to come in for modification of that site plan approval because it was not on the original approval. The applicant submitted the application for that and with our new modern technology here, I've just, there's numerous pages to the pan, I have the paper copies here if anybody on the board or anybody would like to see them. I've just basically submitted the two, what I consider important sheets. This is the whole, the site, the complete site with the solar array on it. The entrance to the properties down here on Osgood Road which goes up past the residential property, I need that.
I know.
Which enters the first solar field where when you're entering the property, there's a area where there's electrical equipment in the first battery storage area and then as you further go into the property towards the second solar field, there's a second area where the battery storage is shown. This is where you first enter the property, you can see where they have electrical inverter, other electronic equipment and then the top rectangular square on the rectangle on the right side of the screen is the first battery storage area. And then as you go further into the site, there is a location for a second battery storage area, which you see in the upper left hand of the screen. On further investigation with these, both these projects, it was brought to my attention that the batteries are actually already located on site. This is the, this is the battery that is closest to the entrance on the first part of the screen where it was on the right side of the screen when you come from Osgood Road. I did not proceed into site, it was gated and everything, so I did not proceed further into the site to the second battery location. But in the foreground is the electrical inverter transformer and the background is the, the white box is the actual battery sitting on the cement pad. The fire department in March of last year has set some guidelines to follow as far as how they want to see the batteries placed on there for safety purposes and everything. I think the applicant will discuss because one of the things they addressed here is to make sure that it was put in a location that would not be a detriment to any current equipment that would be on the property where it could be come a, you know, a hazard or a large, I'm trying to think of the proper word, loss to the site for, you know, shoots, some emergency situation happened, the battery essentially catch on fire. That's the biggest concern with these because they do generate a lot of power.
So, elephant in the room, so everybody knew that, that they had to have a new site plan to submit for these batteries. It was, we've been talking about this for months and months and months, maybe almost a year now about these batteries?
Yes.
And somehow you have batteries showing up on both sites just magically?
Well, towards the end of last week, actually, there's two applications to this applicant and one of the neighbors on the other application on Colburn Road came to me because they were concerned about some other features on the property. Further discussion with him, I asked him because he sent me some photographs. When he sent me the photographs, I realized there's a battery in the photograph and so I went to the site on Colburn Road and determined there's actual battery there. So because of that, I decided maybe I should go over to Osgood Fitzgerald Road and sure enough, there's a battery sitting over there. Then at that point, I contacted the fire department, Dennis Carlson, because he's the one that's been handling this and Kurt Meskis, our building official, building commissioner, has been in on the email loop with all of this. And on Monday, I had received a reply from Dennis about, you know, the guidelines to follow as far as the location of the battery locate sites. And then Kurt Meskis also informed me that, because I asked about, they're already there, how did they get there? Kurt Meskis had replied in his email that he'd given the permission to proceed at their own risk.
And he didn't reach out to the planning board saying that, you know, that you've been talking about this?
No, I, I found this out on Monday. I have the email chain from all my discussions with Dennis and Kurt, which I'll pass around for public board members to have a copy. So I wasn't even aware that that had happened until Monday because my first question is how did they get there without approval from the town? Because they hadn't been before the board yet.
Do we have any board questions too? Because we want to let them present.
Yes.
Do we have any other comments, questions from the board before we let the applicant back in?
Just gonna be talking about the Colburn Road one or?
At this point, we're talking about the Osgood Road one. We'll talk about the Colburn Road at a later time.
I do, I do have a question. So we've got in our regulations and in the Fire Department regulations setbacks and things that, does the current batteries meet these setbacks and these requirements?
The one on the batteries on Osgood Road appeared to me to setbacks as far as from property lines, from other residential structures.
But not from critical equipment?
Well, vital equipment, I mean, and it's my understanding that it's up to the applicant of what they consider vital equipment. And my question, which I asked Dennis and I couldn't get a reply from him in time for this meeting, well, should the battery catch on fire and you have an inverter and transformer sitting there, what happens? I mean, it's generating electricity right next to a fire.
Yeah.
Is that okay from a fire department standpoint? I was unable to get an answer to that question before the meeting. Because to me, the transformer inverter is vital equipment. I mean, that's where the electricity is going through.
You want to disconnect the source, absolutely.
So I think we should have that question answered to make sure that if, if they're okay with that location of the fire, being the fire department, then fine, but we should really know they are okay with that.
If we don't have any questions, we'll let the applicant present the class.
I can take this out, you want to use it?
Yeah, I just brought, I think it's probably somewhere.
What is, what is the gentleman's name?
This is Harold Reader from Zero Point Development.
So as Mr. Benson said, my name's Harold Reader. I'm here representing Zero Point Development for an amendment to an existing approved site plan. The picture you have on the screen here, it's kind of an overview of the entire site. As Mr. Benson said, the access is off Osgood Road there on the right side of the screen. You also have Brookfield Road to the south and then Fitzgerald Road as well to the west there. The two red circles are the locations of the battery energy storage system as well as the other equipment that is on site for the solar array. The amendment itself is for the addition of the energy storage system. So really the only thing that has changed from the approved set of plans is, how do you, give us a next page, there we go, is the addition of the battery concrete pad, the battery system itself. So it's placed just next to the existing equipment. On the top left screen, you can see the concrete pad that will house the, the energy storage system and as well as on the right side of the screen there, the addition of the concrete pad. Other than those two additions to the pad, there's no other changes that have been made to the site since the approved site plan. The concrete pad itself is 56 feet by 20 feet and then the storage unit itself is like your typical Conex box that you see on construction sites or storage yard. It's a eight by 40 foot Conex box and inside is a racking system that houses the individual batteries themselves. It's a self-sufficient enclosed system. The batteries are Samsung lithium ion batteries. If you can kind of envision the racking system, there's, you know, nine feet or so height of this racking system and then the batteries themselves are two feet by one and a half suitcase that, that slide into the racking system and structurally support and, and secure the batteries themselves. There's a fire suppression system within the, within the container. It's self-sufficient, operates on its own, turns on, turns off, monitors, there's 24/7 monitoring system that goes back to a 24/7 computerized monitoring system that, that is being watched and it can also notify local authorities if there was an issue to occur. The, the battery container, as I mentioned, sits on the concrete pad and I know Randy Benson had mentioned that kind of where, when this got approved to where we are now. So I'll kind of just give a background of kind of how that evolved from, from when it originally approved. So back in, I think, April of last year, we came back in front of the planning board with the fire inspector, fire chief and building inspector with their recommendations on what they thought was appropriate for the addition of battery storage. So from April to about now, we had been working with Dennis Carlson and Curtis Meskis to basically get their approval on the layout that we have done. And so from that point till now, that's kind of where we're at and I think the letter that you have from the building inspector and fire chief should be a dated October-ish timeframe and you can see that they've essentially approved this layout, the location and, and the information and material that we've provided to them to this point. And then that's kind of, I guess, how the, the batteries are on site because we have been working with the building inspector and fire chief up to this point. And that's, that's really it for the, for the amendment to the, to the plan. It's an addition of battery equipment, concrete pad which sits on this battery unit itself.
Can you highlight on there where the, the equipment to disconnect and connect the panels?
Yes, you have essentially four pads here and four pads here. They're, they're essentially the same configuration. You have the battery unit, inverter, transformer, recloser, and then meter. And this all essentially runs underground to the entrance of the site, which then goes back to the poles that are on Osgood Road.
So they also run together?
I asked Mr. Reader a question, Tom, this was provided me from a resident here in town. Is this typical of the interior, what one of these batteries looks like?
Not necessarily. The picture that he's shown, you kind of see the racking system there, which you do have the battery systems, but the units that we have here, you do not enter them. Everything's accessed from the outside. There's essentially doors on the outside that you stand there, open up the doors, you're standing on the concrete pad looking in, you never enter the Conex box.
So essentially that space is filled with batteries in the middle?
Yeah, you essentially, these would be back to back and the entrances from the outside standing in, you never, you never enter the, the unit itself.
Do you provide to us pictures of what exactly is on site? You're saying that that's not exactly what is on site?
He was showing a picture of the inside.
Yep.
And he's saying that that's not what it is, so I'd like to see what it really is?
So this is your typical, typical box.
And you do not go inside of it?
Correct, yep. So the, the doors on the outside there, they essentially open up like a bifold, yep, and then your batteries are right there in front of you to access if needed.
What are the dimensions, please?
That unit there is eight foot wide by like 40, 43 feet long.
And each of the four?
There's only, so on this, on Osgood, there's only two of these. One's located here on the bottom right, the other one's located on the top left. The other pads that you see are the other equipment that operates the, the solar panels. It's part of the unit, which is essentially approved at their original plan. So that, that other equipment is there to basically transform AC to DC and bring the power into the poles, all that kind of stuff, but the amendment is for the addition of that one pad. So you'll have two of these, two of these units on this site.
And you proceeded to build those without?
All right, I can't, I'll, I'll open it up to the audience, I promise, I just need a roster.
This is the, okay, this is the first time we are seeing this. So how could you assume that you had approval to do it?
So.
This is the first time you brought this to this board who issued you the permit to go ahead with the solar array? And then you just went out on your own and put this on site without coming back to this board? I was just wondering, how did your mind work that out that you had approval to do it?
Yep, so it was back in April, so I guess it was a little bit of-
April of last year?
Yes, correct. We were in front of you guys, kind of talked through that process.
Right.
And we, I guess, had thought and interpreted after that meeting that, working with the fire chief and building inspector, that it was just needed for their approval afterwards. So we started working with them, working through the details, getting all of them the fire safety and the UL certification and everything that they were-
Was that when Ernie was with you guys? Is he still with you guys?
Ernie Mello is a coworker who was here originally with you guys during the approval of that. He's no longer with the company, but he was the one at that meeting.
Correct. I remember that meeting and there was no approval given at that meeting. There was nothing in writing, nothing verbal, nothing that said you could go ahead and do this.
At that meeting, didn't we end up saying we're gonna talk to our attorney and then we reached out to Mark Bobrowski to say what is the correct, wasn't, we have to go back at minutes, but that's what I believe there is on-
I think, I think that what was said was that they would come back in front of us when that time came. It was more of a, hey, we're thinking about doing this sometime and what do we need to do and we said what we had in the regulations right now, so you need to come back and that's when we came up with the regulations for it.
Well, he's saying April, this letter here is dated March, so.
Yeah. So this, this is when we started coming up with the right, right, the regulations.
Right, this is coming up with more and more of these were coming down the road.
But nothing was approved and nothing was finalized.
We asked for a new site plan once the regulations were placed before we move forward.
So the recommendation you have March, then we came to you guys in April, which Meskis and Dennis Carlson were here. After that meeting, we were still working after that point, working with fire chief and building inspector, under the assumption that we had thought at the time that as long as we had their approval, we were good to, you know, continue, proceed with the site plan. Then we came back here, I think it was around the October timeframe and that's when you had a letter from your town council basically saying this is a field amendment and that we would have to come back to the planning board. So from October till now, we generated these plans and, and had been working with you guys to-
Put them in without even plans?
What's that?
So you, you put them-
When did those arrive on site?
I don't know the exact timeframe, but it was probably in the October-ish timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
Would you pull, go back and pull those minutes for me? No, you don't have to do that now, I want to read those.
I believe what was actually said at that meeting was that they would, we had to get the regulations first and they had to work with the fire department as well as Kurt Meskis to come back with the site plan as, so that we could verify the regulation on the site plan before they were allowed to put them on. And they were going to, the next step was going to be they were going to come back with the site plan, that it was according to the regulation and everything on paper was going to look at, and then once we approved, then they were going to be approved to actually put them on site. Because that was the last meeting we discussed.
And were site inspections done throughout all of this?
Yeah, so I don't know, the letter, you keep referencing the letter that has March on it, there's been, I guess, an updated letter from, which I believe the building inspector has sent to you directly, I think I would see it on an email as well, which is basically our communication that we had with them and their sign off on our communication back and forth on, on what they had recommended.
Do you happen to have a copy of that with you?
I do. I just have the one. So I think it's very, probably the same recommendations. The last couple pages references kind of our communication back and forth between April till now on what they allowed or in their eyes said, you know, was acceptable. Mr. Benson mentioned the distance between other equipment, so one of the recommendations is 15 feet. So through that process, we have located those, that, that battery unit itself, 15 feet from the other equipment that's next to it.
So I know there was an email from Kurt too when we, when this all happened. Can I, can I see the email that came in from Kurt, the recent one?
On Monday?
Yeah. And so here's the correspondence between Randy and Kurt and Dennis. And the last one on top, it's from Kurt and it said, "I gave them permission to set the containers at their own risk." So. So the board is aware that-
That, that's dated what?
And that's just, that's January 6th, Monday.
Monday. So he gave them permission at their own risk to set them as of Monday?
It seems like, it seems like during-
And they were already there from October.
It seems like during the process he did, when he, because there were inspections done. I think that, I think our town needs to look at some communication because the fact that these things went up and-
Do we have a planning board that has some authority?
Yep. Do we have authority as planning board? I'm, I'm curious. Okay, so how do we?
So NFPA regulations, does it meet all the fire protection regulations or the new regulations that came out?
It does. It's the, the UL certifications is the standard that Dennis and Kurt Meskis had asked for, which is essentially the industry standard to follow. It's UL 9540, 1915, I believe. And that really basically outlines and verifies that it's built correctly, it's per code, it's per the standards in industry for the battery system.
And are there any setting, setting guidelines with that or is it just all storage unit?
Are you referring to like site specific?
Yes, site specific regulations for placement of the units or, I'm just looking at the regulations now, so.
Our regulations?
No, the, the National Fire Protection Association.
So I guess through the communications we've had with the fire chief and building inspector, that's essentially what we followed, keeping 15 feet from other equipment and the information that they were asking, we provided on operation maintenance and lock, you know, knock box on the, on the fence itself so that they could have access in and out when needed and stuff like that.
Okay, if we have, I'll open it up to the public to get comments and questions. Is everybody good with that?
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'll open it up. Please keep comments brief and, and-
Name and address. Name and address, please.
Lori Dagnan, 106 Osgood Road. I think all along, we've discussed that batteries are essential to them making money on the solar field. They, they get to sell it during peak hours when we're home, so that's why fighting a battery is, is difficult. But I think we, I'm disappointed with the building inspector for not using this opportunity for what I've been, I've sent four letters to town officials saying this is our one and only chance to get some financial certainty in the form of bonds or cash upfront for the entire array, not just this addition of very much an unknown with the lithium ion batteries. So I would, you know, trust that the fire department and Kurt know where the locations are. So that aside, the actions that we take now are very significant on how we handle this in five years because the batteries fail quickly or 20, 30 years as these panels need replacing, new technology takes over. So we mentioned to Zero Point at the last hearing that have patience with us, this is new. So to hear this, when I've been working finding the actual costs for decommissioning and the cost for these batteries to, to, people claim, oh, recycling, recycling costs money. So anything, anyone that says, well, the batteries are recyclable, yes, but at a cost. So what we do now is so important to set precedence for obviously more batteries that are gonna be coming before you. So with that being said, I've, I've had a lot of calls out and I'm expecting a call within two days with an actual quote from a recycler in Michigan. There's only like two in the country so far, this is so new. Massachusetts is one of like 30 states that have no formulas for mandated bonds for what we're doing right here. So I'm coming up with a form that every town in Massachusetts is gonna have access to. I have called seven planners, talked to them about the bogus amounts that the engineers have put on the bonds because no one knows what the true cost is. So anyway, knowing that this was gonna happen tonight, I made a list of, well, you could approve with some orders of conditions. Obviously, it's already in, so I have a couple of questions for the engineer and then a list of conditions if I can have a little time.
You, honestly, you're probably the foremost authority that we have in this town.
Well, I'm, I'm learning and it's a rabbit hole, there's so much info.
To elaborate on her, I actually received a call from the town planner in Spencer today because they're watching us because everybody is struggling with the exact same issue. They don't know how to come up with the decommissioning on, on batteries. And solar arrays themselves are hard enough, but then when you throw the battery in, it just makes it more difficult. So everybody's watching, nobody has a true grasp of it at this point.
And it's supposed to protect not only us as taxpayers, but the people that have leased their land, they don't know. They, they went on the assumption of the engineer knows what they're doing, but these people, they're selling their interest in the field so quick that assessors can't keep up with who owns the field. So if I could ask, do you have an interconnectivity agreement already?
We do.
And it's in writing? Do they know you're putting batteries in? Do they know you're putting batteries in?
They do.
Have you received a written consent from Mr. Mitchell and Mr. McDougall that you are adding batteries to their field?
That was submitted with the application that we put in.
Okay. Have they seen an MSDS sheet on what exactly is in that battery?
Um, they should have. The MSDS sheet, along with all the information, has been provided to the town and Kurt Meskis and-
Well, if you just got the battery in October, the, the recycler is telling me that all batteries are not created equal. The batteries are getting cheaper to produce, but it means more costs in the recycling end. And they burn out quicker, just like, you know, when you buy a no-name battery, it doesn't last as long. So you're going to have more and more of these being discarded and people like Casella don't know what to do with the batteries either. So she needs an actual MSDS from this manufacturer and if I could get a copy of that to get a proper quote and the amount of sixty-six thousand batteries per container has been floated around as an average. So that gives people an idea of the sheer volume in that small container. So if this went ahead, I'll back up. My letters to the town were asking for bonds to be negotiated prior to allowing the batteries to be added, because there's no incentive. Private landowners didn't have to supply a bond, although we know that their land is not sufficient equity for the cost of cleanup if they should just walk. So this is a good thing that maybe we could deny the final inspection by the electrical inspector until we get a bond. There's got to be something that you can do so they cannot start producing and making money unless we get our financial surety.
Well, no, there's never, there's not an approval now, now that we have, you know, there's no approval until we get the bond.
I'm just afraid Kurt's going to say it's an accessory use and they've started up. Have you, you haven't produced yet, doesn't look like you're tied in at the end of the street yet.
No.
All right, so I would like that, obviously, not to happen until we can come up with some order of condition, so.
Not to cut you off, I will add, so the approved plans before was approved with a decommissioning bond included with it. And then we have provided a revised plan to be updated with the battery system. That total cost is around a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the decommissioning value.
What was the previous one?
So the, we, we got a quote from a third party to decommission the equipment itself. It's around seventeen thousand dollars to remove that. So two units there, you're looking at thirty-two, whatever that math is there. So you're fifty grand less than what it was before and you're, the total's one-twenty-seven.
And how many batteries are there in those units?
The number of batteries themselves, I don't know the exact count. The container is eight by forty. I can get that number on the-
Nine feet high?
Yeah, it's nine, the interior is about nine feet.
Well, so basically, I have examples of engineers that have come up, including Zero Point, with a decommissioning dollar amount and they keep factoring in recycling as if it's a cash cow. They have no hazardous waste disposal whatsoever, so that's a whole nother thing, we could get stuck in the weeds. But for the sake of now, this is our one chance. And then I can give you quotes of what other towns are doing. So I was hoping we'd make sure we have a copy of the interconnectivity agreement between Zero Point and the grid. I would like to add that we have a copy of the existing bond between Zero Point and the landowner so we can see how that, because I've seen some as low as twelve thousand dollars for two megawatts, which is absurd. A material safety data sheet, or now they call them SDSs, from the manufacturer must be supplied in order for this recycling company to properly estimate the cost of recycling, disposing and the freight involved as well. A written and signed agreement specifically stating that the landowner acknowledges and accepts the addition of the lithium ion batteries and acknowledged that they have been provided the information. This is the part where other towns are well ahead of us. They're asking for cash upfront, given to the town's treasurer. Some are doing a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars cash upfront to be kept in an account, which will be accessed if the waste is determined not to be disposed of properly. An additional surety bond will be required. I would like to see a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar insurance bond or line of credit for every megawatt of solar produced. The cash in the savings account would only be used to initiate and retain an attorney, if needed, to exercise the use of the bond and the line of credit should the solar company not fulfill its duties. A secured line of credit is just an amount estimated for the safe transport, recycling and disposal of the batteries. This will be provided by Battery Solutions and I should have one of those in two days. I would also like to see contingent upon review from the Board of Health. This is ever-changing, many different types of batteries. So they should have it in file as well as the safety data sheet. The assessors, which I've been talking with, the treasurer and the Board of Selectmen. Now, the town collector's office should also be notified to be sure that Zero Point has no outstanding debts to the town. Whenever anybody goes for a building permit, they look at those things. So if they've merely done a field change, who's to say that their financial hasn't changed? As we know, Zero Point is the number one company that is going for the abatements and not paying us any personal property tax. So this is a company who is suing us and we've had to retain counsel, the assessors. So we have to know who we're dealing with and this is the one chance that we can change the mistakes of the past. As far as other towns, I'll give you their amount. Okay, Westbrook Field, as reported by Board of Selectmen Dan Bigby, they require upfront a hundred thousand dollars cash surety per megawatt. This has already been approved by the Attorney General's Office as well. They are going for more and they've gained support to increase this to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. They have not addressed the added liability of battery storage. They're waiting to see what I find out.
Who is this?
Westbrook Field, Barry Mass-
Hundred thousand dollars per megawatt?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because it's, it's hard, like some of these insurance companies that, I, you'd probably know more of being banking. The insurance companies could go under, but if you have a secured line of credit with an FDIC institution, they have some, yeah, so, and then Barry has, they require a copy of the general liability insurance policy, listing the type and quantities of batteries. Coverage is one million by occurrence, two million in aggregate and five million in excess liability under an umbrella policy. They require written notice when someone's going to install lithium ion batteries and the utility company has favorably responded. They also require a deposit made to the Barry treasurer of twenty-five percent of the decommissioning, removal, disposal and site restoration costs upfront. And so they're not getting mixed up with the whole, if you look, they have prevailing wage on any of the engineering, all the racking and they just want, this is what we want, it's a simple formula and then readdress it every three to five years. So Spencer, they're requesting three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars per megawatt and that's coming up at their town meeting. And Auburn, Lester, Sturbridge, Webster, they've only been taking the amounts the engineering firms have provided. They haven't hit the batteries yet. So, we're it.
Actually, she brought up a point that I had to deal with just a couple of weeks ago, which is something to think of when you're thinking long-term is all green and solar, which is another facility in town. They're completing their projects and everything and they had to put up a decommissioning bond, which essentially for that project, it's a very small one on the corner of Fox Bow and Route 20. And it was forty-five thousand dollars. The bonding company would only issue them a bond to be renewed annually. Well, if they don't pay the bond three years down the road, now you no longer have a bond, so. And it was going to cost them the same amount as if they just put the cash bond upfront over the thirty-year period they predicted this. So the fact that he said, "We would have to renew this annually," I'm like, well, what if the client doesn't pay? Well, then we don't renew the bond. That's if you do a surety bond versus a cash bond. So that's something to think about. I don't know if there's a, you know, another avenue, but that's with the bonding. He goes, "Normally, I would never do this because, you know, who wants to renew a bond annually? Who's going to have faith that a bond can get renewed annually for thirty years?" So even the bonding agent said, you know, "You should do a cash bond, you know, it's the only logical way to do it for both parties."
And the Attorney General seems to support that, so.
I will add that part of the, the first approval of the, of the site plans, when we were working with you guys during the decommissioning, we had put in there, discussed that we would provide an updated estimate every five years and come back to the town to make sure that that value is accurate and is still valid and the solar company owner is still, you know, in, in good health and, and working. So that's, that's part of what we had proposed and was a part of the original approval of the decommissioning.
I have a, a copy of Zero Point's decommissioning bond for their parcel in Lester. They have no hazardous material costs, they've not included any cost for modules and there are assumptions, there's assumptions that the panels are recyclable, very, very, very vague. So again, it's proof that they're not taking all things into account.
I think that when we, we've had these, we're, we're kind of in the dark, so the engineer does an estimate and our engineer, who isn't a solar specialist, looks at their engineer and says, "Well, all the math works. It seems to make sense," right? I think that's what we've been doing and for some reason Westbrook Field has these high dollar amounts. I don't, you know, ten years down the line, I don't want us to say, you know, whoops. And then, and the landowner is saying, "Well, why didn't you guys do something? You knew more about this, we, we just, we're just a landowner, so why aren't you protecting us?"
Yeah, and leaning on the land isn't going to clean up this thirty field. So we're in a little bit different spot than, than the other towns because we already have so many and we're at a max. So it's hard to go back and say, "Oh, you didn't have to do one or it was only twelve thousand dollars, we want more money." So this is the time, we have some leverage. You want to put batteries on there, you're getting the DOE are incentives for batteries? You're making plenty, you know, we've already given them incentives through our government. So, and you're getting tax exempt for property tax because of the loophole. You have the money, other towns have gotten it, it's just, we just need to, to play hardball. It's proof of, of how many times we've been sued.
We'll, we'll, we'll have conditions, so we'll be able to figure all this out through conditions.
And I'll, I'll keep working on the dollar amounts to help you out, so.
No, we appreciate that. Citizen of the year.
Hi, Michelle McAvie at seventy-eight Partridge Hill Road. I just have a quick question. You seem to know a lot about this, so maybe you all know, I don't know, maybe you guys know. So obviously, on, on one side of this project is the Partridge Hill roadside. So there's a few of us here that are neighboring, neighbors of that and kind of our property above this. So I, when I hear battery, it kind of, like batteries or lithium power and all that stuff, I'm not knowledgeable in it, but my concern is risk of, you know, like radiation, if that's even a thing with batteries, or like leaks or anything like that, like with our property being there and with us having well water and all that stuff. Is that anything, like a health, health risk or anything that can come up, or no?
I would have more concern about the health risk from modules that have been damaged so that the heavy metals are leaching down into the groundwater, which, I mean, all you have to do is look at, online at the pictures of San Juan or Puerto Rico and the Virgin Islands. The debris that falls, that cracks them and they're leaving them on the ground even when they're being replaced because nobody knows what to do with them. That I would have more concern with than the batteries. The batteries, they do have the fire suppression and if they stick to their radius, then that would be good. But yes, there is a lot of issues with batteries, so we just have to trust that they're not going to-
It's more the disposal.
Yeah, if there's a fire and then we're stuck with waste that is enabled.
Maybe we should suggest the Board of Health sign-off on any, any batteries, any solar modifications.
And the actual MSDS from that battery, because some have more chromium in them than others. Some are more valuable to recycle.
MSDS?
It's now an SDS, it used to always be MSDS.
Safety data sheet.
And I have a copy of one to give you an idea. This came from Sterling, Mass. It's, it's pretty significant and they've actually had like nineteen changes. But it gives you an idea as to what makeup is. And the battery recycler said, "They're all different, so you really have to ask for an MSDS from that particular manufacturer of the battery, just to cover yourself." And it, there's other batteries out there, there's like a saltwater battery and then another kind. So there's a lot to stay on top of.
One of my concerns for us on either side of this, me and some of my neighbors on Partridge Hill, I actually have something to bring up for the solar project, that's, because I'm the easement, so.
I don't mean to cut you off, that's our number.
That's, we're on Osgood, we're going to go-
We haven't opened that public area for that application.
That's the next one, okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Is that the one where the, all the trees will come down, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll talk about all the-
Yeah, well, the power, I don't know if it's for this one or, because this is all connected because the easement is where the underground power wires are.
Right, that's what the Culver and Road-
Yeah, so, okay, so I'll just wait, sorry.
I was just going to ask about the battery. Is there, is there a possibility of leakage?
So the, the batteries themselves, they have a double walled system, so the cell itself is contained within a steel containment and then it's in, what I referred to as before as the suitcase. So you do have your double wide, or double, double walled system there and then that is housed within the racking system, which is in this sealed container itself. I guess I would never say never, but the likelihood is, I think, slim to none. And then that whole container is sealed and has the bells and whistles to, if there was a leak, an individual battery, that's all monitored and would notify the twenty-four hour, you know, monitoring system. And then obviously, you know, part of the maintenance and operation plan would, would come and fix that or replace that battery with another one.
So those units won't require a dike around them?
The battery unit itself sits on a concrete pad, there's no additional dike or swale. The drainage and everything else was, was designed for, for the site plan has been reviewed by a third-party engineer, but I guess the, the pad itself doesn't have like a wall or anything around it because the, the steel unit, the containment is, is, I guess, in place of that.
Rob Lemansky, Sunset Drive, Charlton, also I'm going to butter on the east side of this property. The, the batteries, how, how much of the solar field production will the battery, batteries hold? Half a day, whole day, two days?
For the length of the time, the batteries themselves, the unit, it's about two to three-day hold period. That's, that's assuming that the sun doesn't come out and regenerate the solar panels.
If, if in fact you've got a one-meg site of, of array, will the batteries hold two-meg if they were empty?
It's about half of what the solar array produces. So if it's a one-meg, it, one-meg, you're looking at half that the batteries would store.
So what's going over here on, on this property?
So this is a four and a half, so the batteries themselves are looking at two megawatts worth of batteries.
Two megawatts, which, which is an advantage, I guess, to everybody, both the, the property owner slash, or the owner of the array and national grid, because now they're going to be able to use electricity from that array when it's dark.
Correct. The, the program, the renewable energy program in the state, it's, it's being geared towards so that, like you said, that during peak hours and peak demands, when people come home and switch on their lights and everything, that's when the dollar signs, electricity's most expensive. The idea is that these battery systems, national grid would be able to draw from there and reduce the cost for, for electricity.
So in essence, that would help to reduce the load, the daily load that's on those wires-
Correct.
That goes out, yeah, which, you don't want to hear this, Lori, which would mean you could do more solar because you've got enough space.
That's right.
But anyways, nice job, Lori. Everyone appreciates all the hard work you do, but-
And that's why we have a limit, Bob.
Maybe you could lighten up a little bit, we're all worried about you, but anyways, good work. The, if the plan- good work. The, if the planning board is able to, well, before I go there, since Zero here has quite a few arrays, are these the first two sites to where batteries are gonna be installed?
Nope. We have, at least for our projects, we have installed right on Upbridge.
In Charlton.
Oh, oh, sorry, yes, yeah.
In the town of Charlton, okay. So I would highly recommend that if you're able to get another bite of the apple of these agreements, that you switch to pilot programs to get your tax money and not do the assessing department so that no one can interfere with the money that's coming into the town. State has no control. Federal government has no control. In fact, the actual buyers of the project would rather have it that way 'cause they know exactly what their costs are this year, next year, and ten years out, 'cause the taxes don't change because of the agreement. Doesn't mean the taxes won't change. It's just you go by the agreement. So if the planning board has the ability to reopen the can based on the site plan, I've stressed to you that what you need to do is do pilot programs with a lot of thought and a lot of input from as many people as you can as far as how do you do this long-term agreement to where you don't kill the investor, but also you protect the town so that you're able to keep up with a gallon of milk as far as the cost goes.
I think that's a great suggestion for the Board of Selectmen. I think they control the pilot agreements and maybe that's a discussion to have among the boards, meaning planning board doesn't approve or maybe until there's a pilot agreement.
No, the planning board, we did say that they have to have a pilot program. Then they would go to the Board of Selectmen and that program would then get approved on the town floor. I believe all pilot programs, just like what happened at US General, whatever, it gets approved on the town floor, if my recollection is correct.
Worth a discussion point if we can get in.
It's actually in the new regulations. It states that if the applicant should enter into a pilot agreement, that that pilot amount be equal to the taxable amount any other business would pay in town. And that would be, the assessors would weigh in on that. But what we hit, Rob, is all of these have been approved without pilots, thinking, and that was because the assessors, pilots originally originated for nonprofits, payment in lieu of taxes. So you had people coming in that didn't pay taxes, the 501(c)(3)'s. So that's what pilots originated for, not a for-profit industry like solar and any energy company. So we do have it on the books, but what's to make them renegotiate now that they already, they already have a get out of jail free card with this abatements? But yeah, I totally agree.
And I think Mr. Reader here will admit that the ideal situation for any solar array is to have the battery backup because of the ability to sell more electricity. So if they have that ability to sell more, then one of the...
And they make more.
...hobby of they gotta give up.
'Cause they can sell it at the high amount. If they make it during the day, National Grid doesn't wanna pay during the noon hours. So it's advantageous for everybody.
Again, if, in fact, you're able to do that. And just to, just to have a little bit of insight as far as what, and I don't wanna speak for Mr. Mescus, but I personally, on one of my properties, that unit that's going on there is typical to one of those storage units that brings inventory from California to China every single day. And those units that you can purchase, I owned one. I had made a call to the building inspector and it's no different than Eagle or any of those people. When you call Eagle up and say, "Drop off a storage unit off to me 'cause I'm gonna move," you're allowed to put anywhere and any amount of feet. So I had called for a permit. He says, "No, there's no permit on these," just because there's, you know, there's really no need of a foundation. They sit on the ground and the thing is, it's portable. So the thing that I would recommend, if, in fact, these batteries are highly contaminated or the camp, the contaminants, and when you say chromium, that foundation should be no different than the foundation that's around an outside oil storage tank, which is a hundred and fifty percent greater than what the tank can hold if, in fact, the tank was to rupture. So it's great it's on concrete, but again, there's no way of protecting what, as far as the amount of leakage that could come out of there. And of course, batteries, again, I don't know. And like you bringing up the point, battery today is not the same battery as gonna be fifteen years down the road. One of my sons cashed in batteries a couple weeks ago and says, "We just needed to get them out of here because it's taken up some old space. Get a hundred and fifty dollars for them." And again, it was, you know, less than a pickup truckload. But, you know, they do have value today, but I don't know if the batteries that you're talking about, that hold seawater, are gonna have the same value if they control whatever material they have within them, if, in fact, it has value.
That's why we had the specialists. So can we, can you send an email to the Board of Selectmen and see if we can get on their agenda to discuss this? Because maybe now's the time to talk about whether we can work on fixing the mistakes with the pilot. Maybe there's something that we can do, fee up front, whatever, to kinda...
And there's four letters that I've sent. So they're aware that I've been asking for bonds. So...
This is the assessors' department.
All, I've copied everybody that we all have to work together because what we do today is going to dramatically affect what this town looks like in twenty years. And as new technology comes, I don't wanna be doomsday person, but you kinda have to think that way 'cause nobody else, the state has allowed this to go on and leaves it up to groups just like us. And a lot of people don't know what to do, so...
Let's see, I mean, you guys have a meeting next Tuesday?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, so maybe we can, we'll reach out and maybe we can get the assessor, maybe we can actually have a discussion to say, we, obviously, this will be continued. We can have that discussion to maybe...
Help with the formula.
Or the options, maybe. I don't know if we have to run it by legal too, so we know we're all on the same page. We do what we should do to set up the right precedent for the future.
Can I ask a question? Where is this array disconnected from the grid? If you needed to disconnect this array from the grid, where is that worked out? Is that at the inverter? Is that the inverter that controls this area? Or is there someplace down by the road that you can...
Yeah, it's kind of both places. So you have the equipment that'll be on the pole on the street and then you also have it at the pads here.
So if there's catastrophic meltdown or major situation, is there a fuse that blows? Is there, is it done automatically here?
It is done automatically and each equipment, specifically the battery storage, has a remote push button that cuts everything off if you need to get to that point, but...
So if the, if the batteries are flaring, how do you disconnect that array from the grid?
It automatically disconnects. When it triggers that there's an issue, it disconnects itself.
What setup to do that?
Correct, yeah.
Obviously, I have two questions. Are the batteries currently in operation?
No.
They're not?
No.
Okay, so then, is the planning board considering issuing a cease and desist so they don't get connected until all of these things are straightened out?
It'll be a discussion.
And then I would like to stress that, say, what Dawn said happens and there's a fire, if we don't, that landowner could say, "Hey, I didn't know there were batteries." Given this big packet, I would like it separate from everything else so they understand the liability. So they can double-check their bond to know that they're covered. This is new. And I can't imagine that Jack would under, I can't read all of those. You just trust, we're trusting people, so...
My understanding is that there's a catastrophic event here, there is a fire, the fire probably can't, hands off.
That's right. But I'm afraid like Jack would sue us for not explaining that there was something that's flammable in his yard.
Hi, Linda on forty-seven Osgood Road. First of all, thank you so much to Laurie for all of that wonderful research and so informative. I would just like to reiterate the idea that you need to proceed most cautiously. And even though I certainly support everyone getting together, maybe as soon as next week, but before you do, really have thought out all of the different issues that you want to bring to bear, because there are multiple complexities that Laurie has pointed out. And I certainly think there ought to be some consequence as well for Zero Point having proceeded without permission, such as Rob suggests on a cease and desist, because I think they're trying to present it as something very simple and it is anything but. Because as the discussion goes on, there are all kinds of different issues that have come up regarding the type of storage, the foundation, the adequacy of the foundation, potential for fires, leakage, all of these different things, and financial as well, particularly in, should there be a decomposition need and all. And they mentioned five years checking. I don't see how, the way things change, I don't think five years is frequent enough. So I would urge you to be as thorough as possible before you proceed with any permission to go any further.
I promise we're, nothing, I don't think any permissions are gonna happen, but we're, Laurie's been keeping us honestly very, very informed. I get one or two, three, four emails a day. No. But the research and the calls are, I mean, we, the town could be paying a consultant to do what you're doing, to be honest, the kind of research and the calls. And we're very lucky that you're...
Well, the internet is inundated with so much information placed there by solar companies, green energy companies. It's, even when, right. And when you think you have a legitimate site with some acronym, it's paid for by the solar. So that's what we're, every town is up against. So it's nice to know we're not the only ones hitting this.
At the end of the day, we all wanna just protect this, and not just the residents, but the town liability for the town. And the last thing we need is more poison in the ground or anything like that in this town. So we absolutely will take this slow and us all meeting and having a discussion with the boards to see, and again, maybe even legal to see what we can do. So as we move a little further, we can make the right decision.
And that's, actually, now's a good time to do it, 'cause I've dealt with like two facilities in the last month where as soon as it's getting built, they're turning around and selling them. So if we don't do it now, somebody buying it's not going to know what they're getting into. And they say, "Well, you made that agreement with them, not with us." It's gotta go with the solar array, you know, the approved project, so...
That's right. Let's get everybody on the same page, including the building inspector, so we all make sure that we're working together to the same goal. Do we have any other questions? Comments? So do we want to continue?
Continue the public hearing? Make a motion, continue the public hearing to, should we continue with the next meeting?
Next meeting, January twenty-second.
Second.
The agenda's still open?
Yeah.
On favor?
Aye.
Stand.
In the meantime, do we, do we wanna have Curtis attend?
Yes.
About where we proceed, fire department, or do we have enough on your regulations to be the fire department at this point? And looking at what they've regulated and the National Fire Protection Association E55, it's similar and it's, it seems suitable?
I think the safety regulations.
Whether this site follows that, I don't know, but it seems like the regulations for fire department.
Seems like one of them is close to following it and the other one is not.
Okay, so that's the other, that's the one that we're gonna talk about next?
And, I mean, I think the regulations, but I think it's the all the other, the other legality stuff, the other, can we, you know, significantly increase? Can we do the cash upfront? Is there other requirements? I know, Mr. Lemansky, you mentioned the pilot thing, but is there something that we can bring in to say, "No batteries unless you..."
It's the decommissioning that concerns me the most, at least for this site here.
I mean, I agree with decommissioning, but...
I think they're okay.
In town revenue too. The town could use the revenue. If we legally can do that, then let's do, let's work with who we can to do that. So continue to our next meeting? Do I have an open, do I have a...
In accordance with Section MGL, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one P, the Charlton Planning Board's going to allow Section three point two point one and seven point one point four, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January eighth, at seven PM in the planning board's office, on the application of Zero Point Development, requesting approval of a site plan modification to add battery storage to an existing ground-mounted solar array. The proposed battery storage location will be next to the existing electrical equipment as shown on plans by D.C. Engineering last revised November eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. The proposed subdivision is located at one oh seven Culver Road, Charlton, Mass. The property contains a total of approximately a hundred and twenty-eight point one five acres. The property ID is Assessors Map fifty-seven, Block A, parcel nineteen, and is zoned agricultural. So, Mandy, do you have any comments before we...
Yeah, well, this one, sorry, I gotta plug in.
Who is the one you talked about?
It's probably the same.
Oh, it's over there.
Okay.
So, Mr. Reader, I'm sure has this. This is a Culver Road project. Let me get down the size here. This is the complete site of the Culver Road project. It's located at one oh seven Culver Road. This page just shows a blow-up of the area where the battery storage is actually located. Culver Road is actually to the south on this property. Partridge Hill Road is actually to the east on the right. And you see, it's been going across the property from the solar array out to Partridge Hill Road. The battery is the lower of the three rectangular boxes located basically in the center of the picture. This project is actually where it was brought to my attention about the batteries being there. It's with the notice to the neighbors and everything. I spoke to, one of the neighbors came in and he wanted to see the plans 'cause he was concerned about what was over there. And one of his concerns was, as we'll get to the pictures, this is showing the inverter area. We have more newer pictures. This is the actual battery location. But what I really want to note here is on the original site plan, on the outside of this fence, it's all completely cleared to the property line. And that area was supposed to remain treed as per the site plan approval. It's even on the site plan and it's completely bare up to the property line. I wasn't aware of this till last Thursday when I went to the site. So...
No, it's this one.
This is so...
This one.
We have talked about this early on and I thought that that had been remedied and we had a, do we have a planning?
We, actually, the Osgood Fitzgerald Road property had some issues with it at the time, which had been remedied. I'm not aware of anything with Culver Road. This was, on the plan, was supposed to be some small clearing and everything, but basically, in the brush, it was supposed to be removed and everything, but the trees were supposed to remain. It's been completely cleared up to the property line from the fence, is from the fence area to the property line. It was supposed to be basically remain trees and everything to act as a buffer between the solar array. This was prior to the battery, the solar array, the equipment, and the neighboring properties, because these are residential properties that are on the outside of the solar array. This here is actually the easement that is running from the solar array out to Partridge Hill Road. It was a, supposed to be a twenty-foot-wide easement. The property owner of this property has some concerns, which I'm sure she'll express later, about what the clearing, if it's larger than what was actually required. This is another photograph showing the fenced area and the property line and how it's been cleared all the way up to the property line, which is the area with the main buffer. To the left of the screen are the two closest residential properties, which is the reason why the buffer was supposed to remain. To the left of the screen are the two closest residential properties, which is the reason why the buffer was supposed to remain.
Are the batteries sitting near those?
Excuse me?
Are the batteries sitting close to those residences?
The batteries are inside the fence to the right. The, um...
That was supposed to be a fifty foot, that was a fifty-foot buffer between, between the property line and the fence here.
Yeah, they're right there.
Yeah, this is, this is, this is the, this is the fence, and this is the battery on the other side of the fence.
So, those batteries are about how far from the property line, do we know?
Well, the battery is, and there's no dimension on the plan, according to the fire department. It's based on what the inverter is, is somewhere between sixty-five and seventy-five feet. But the fire department has specifically said one hundred feet. So, it doesn't meet what the fire department recommendations are.
We should've specified that the trees couldn't be invisible.
This, as a result, this is actually, I'm going back to our original site plan approval, but this was brought to my attention as a result of, I had first had one concerned neighbor, and then I had a second concerned neighbor who, where, is actually owns a property where the easement runs out to Partridge Hill Road. And this is part of the original site plan approval. This is showing the easement area as it, the solar fields behind, in the back there, and basically just standing there, Partridge Hill Road.
And that was supposed to be cut just the width of a piece of equipment to get through there, not?
Correct.
Yeah, they, and, uh...
Not a fifty-foot?
No, this is the area of concern right here. This was not on the original site plan.
They told you it would be very unobtrusive, yeah.
The, there was a area shown where the green box was gonna be and everything. I went up to the site and I saw, um, this extra pad there with the bollards. My first concern is I do believe that at least one of those bollards are actually in the town right of way. They're not shown on the plan, they just put them in, they didn't come to the town for any approval for any of that.
What is that second pad for? Is that just a handle, or is that?
Nobody knows, it just appeared. And that's why, so, this is where the wire, you know, the electricity's coming from the solar field and connecting to the grid. They put in, I believe, two new poles on Partridge Hill Road where they are connecting to the grid. The, the one new pole is actually right next to the bollard on the right side of the screen.
So, did National Grid do this, or did Zero Point contractor do this, this one?
The, because I've seen there have been a contractor, wasn't, it was a, I believe, must be a subcontractor at Zero Point. Maybe Mr. Reader can, has more knowledge about that, but I don't know.
I'm sure he's probably not a there.
Typically, National Grid sets poles, but then the contractor does all the rest of it.
Regulations, but, yeah.
Yeah, so, I think the pad on the bollards is National Grid. That's the additional pad you see there. And, um, we did, had talked to the, to the landowner, and come springtime, we still have to go out and plant, screen in, clean up that area when the weather is right to plant actual plantings and screening for that area.
So, what's the plan for, for the rest of the runway and the, uh?
Yes, I'm, I'm not, uh...
The right-of-way and around the array grid, that was, that was cleared.
So, I know, I would have to look back at the, the original plans. I know there was clearing that just to occur outside that fenced area. I don't know the exact limits of that, but I, I can look back at that to see where that actually was.
So, what's the plan, is the plan to replant?
Yeah, if, if we're, uh...
If you make them.
More than, than what was originally approved, yeah, we would, we would do additional plantings.
We have the site planned, right, that should have the buffers on there.
We'll just pull out the original plan and get it final.
And whose call was it to put that extra pad in right by the bollards?
Yeah, you say it might be National Grid.
That National Grid's called to put that out?
I believe so, yes. Yeah. So, essentially, they, the equipment that's on a pole, they move down to the town.
What is it for anyways?
Looks like it's an underground access pole.
It's underground.
It's all underground through that easement to that pole right there.
Does National Grid have the authority to just do that? Because they're a utility?
Yeah, and they have an easement on that property, so they, they really check.
Correct.
This is their, um, this page here actually addresses that area, the side of the fence here.
Area beyond fence to have trees topped and leaves stumps in undergrowth in place. That's beyond the fence. So, the growth could come back quick, but there's no stumps.
Well, yeah.
The trees topped.
Trees that topped, they saved the top out.
Yeah.
Thirty feet difference.
Yeah.
Oh, different to the top, you're talking about. They left the bottom, that was underneath the ground.
I think it was a Christmas tree, it'd be very hard to decorate. So, the right-of-way is only twenty, twenty-eight, right?
I, I would also say, I, a cease and desist on this property, until they come back with a good plan to, to show us what they're gonna do for regrowth and, and...
I would support that.
Do you, what is the pad that National Grid put in, what's, what's that for?
So, the, it's their equipment that they typically have on poles or pad-mounted, they moved it down to pad-mounted.
So, probably not gonna be able to do much about that, because the...
Well, I'm concerned, because I mean, only the town can grant something to be put in the town right of way. I don't know if that bollard, I mean, it's a utility, I know.
They would need an easement, right?
Well, if they have an easement on that property, I don't know what they'd do. They have an easement there, Laurie, so it's, it's an easement on the property owner, it's an easement.
National Grid has an easement.
National Grid has an easement. That would allow them putting that in there. Well, no, I think, I think we did prove that last week, I believe.
Yeah, there was an easement out to there, but my concern is that the bollards, I mean, telephone pole, we all know they're a utility, they can be put there, but the bollards themselves and what they're...
I'm assuming it's a transformer that's gonna go there. Is that gonna be transformer, or is that gonna be switchgear? What's, what's your box there?
Uh, that's probably the...
Switchgear disconnect?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I don't...
And they will probably have the same.
Okay, they don't use, or they put, they have their own?
Yep.
They don't just require one?
Yeah, they have, they have their own as well.
So, where those yellow things are, they'll put it, well, they'll be on the box?
So, those are, I guess, to protect if a car were to drive off, it's just for safety, so it doesn't hit the equipment, it's the concrete bollard?
The nice yellow colors.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, that's what I'm...
So, what was, can, can I just, I'm curious, there's some things that brings up just... So, that was supposed to be a twenty-foot right-of-way going through there. It looks like they cleared a lot more than, than twenty feet, according to the picture that went through there.
It's a particular mole.
The runway. Is that more than twenty feet, do we know?
Five thousand percent.
So, I think they're gonna need to do something there to, to fix that too.
And then what does it say about the fence?
The area beyond fence to have trees topped and leaves stoked.
Growth could come back, so it would fill, but now this, the growth is gonna be trees. I guess I have to ask the obvious question, what was the reasoning behind doing the clearcutting and increasing the easement size?
I'm not sure, I'd have to get an answer for that.
Contractor decided they wanted to give a bit of space. Contract will be done with trees.
So, if that twenty feet is, is the only right-of-way that they had through there, would they extend beyond that twenty-foot right-of-way? If they actually went on to your property, then the damage behind it would, for home or also something?
Yeah, because it's only a twenty, twenty, I mean, I get if it was another foot, but...
Yes, it looked like it was supposed to, yeah. Can we bring back to that picture again and just kind of get that? What's that?
Uh, sure, yeah, that's fine.
Cut yourself a lawyer.
And one thing is when the original buffer was approved with the original site plan, the battery was a couple of these there. I mean, based on the side width, it says ninety-six on the outside, sitting on the pad.
I, I absolutely, I would, I'll just tell the lawyer, I mean, look at the personal side of this, just, we'll do everything we can in here. I personally, yeah, okay.
And if we actually look through the emails with my correspondence with Dennis Carlson and everything, I believe the one that's in there that he said the fire department did not approve this to be at sixty-five feet.
Yeah, Thomas said, Thomas did his comment.
We wanna continue the, the public hearing, or?
Do we?
Okay, well, I'm sorry.
Uh, for the record, Harold Reader with Zero Point Development. Very similar from our previous conversation with Osgood Road. Just to kind of get your bearings right, this is a kind of a site overlay of the site. On the right there, you have Partridge Hill Road to the south, which is the access to the site is Colburn Road, and then to the left is Bond Road. So, really, the only thing that's changed from the original site plan, other than the items that we just discussed, which I can give you an answer to when I talk to the team, is the addition of the equipment pad. So, that equipment pad, similar to the other site, is next to the existing equipment for the battery storage, uh, for the solar array, and that's shown here on the southern portion of the, of the equipment. As Mr. Benson mentioned, the equipment is about seventy-five feet from the property line. And it is the exact same configuration and, and details as I had mentioned with the previous site. Yep?
What's the length of the access road from Colburn to that field?
From, um, I don't know the exact length off the top of my head. You're probably upwards of a hundred, the scale on the bottom there, just alone, what you're seeing there is, is probably within the hundred-feet range, so, it's, it's, exceeds, exceeds that. It runs from all the way from Colburn up to the, to the site there.
Question, seeing how you don't meet the regulation as far as the setback, what are you gonna do with the, with that, since you're only sixty-five or seventy-five feet when the regulations are a hundred feet?
So, again, talking with the building inspector and fire chief, that was a distance that we had discussed. And his recommendation, which you can see in our communication, that he thought that the seventy-five feet was adequate for the location from the property line, and then the additional three hundred-plus feet of forested area to the, to the residence on Partridge Hill. If there's concerns with that, we certainly up for discussion on how to mitigate that.
All right, I mean, my only thing is, they have the regulation here dated March twenty-sixth, for that a hundred feet, and I don't get how they don't tell you that seventy-five feet would be sufficient?
Yeah, so, from the March-April timeframe, which they generated that letter, there was another letter in October, which I handed to the board tonight with our kind of communication back and forth.
Yeah, I'm just going by what was sent to us from the fire department, as far as what their regulations are. Never mind what the correspondence was amongst you guys.
Which, which is a letter to the board, that's, that's to you guys, from, from the building inspector and fire chief.
I already checked that out.
Yeah, it looks like they're requesting a waiver.
According to what the email said, they realized that they were only, that it was sixty-five feet from budding property lots. Given the fact that the B E S S location is approximately four hundred and fifty feet from a budding residence, we request a waiver from this condition on this site. That's what Ernie had written back in October of two thousand and nineteen.
Who's the granting authority on that?
Uh, this email, this letter.
I don't think the planning, the planning board ever signed up for that waiver.
No, we didn't, it was from Ernie to Dennis Carlson and Curtis Meskis. Okay, and they just said that they are requesting that. I don't see anything where anything was branded.
Well, when Craig gets back on vacation, we'll have a discussion to see how that happens. So, it never happens again, we don't want, this is March, this is October, so, there was regulations in place.
Yeah.
I think, if I may, Chairman, is the, um, this again is another opening of the door even further as far as revisiting the entire optimization of the array, to where, again, it, like I said, opens the door for the pilot program. And, um, again, I just wanted to make that point, but I do have a question, is on the, uh, on these battery packs, I just noticed on the picture here versus what you showed on Osgood Road, they have air conditioning units?
What was it?
They do.
They're cooling units.
They're cooling units, do we know how much decibels they give off?
When you're standing right next to them, they're about seventy decibels, and then as you get further away, down to fifty-foot range, that decibel decreases to around fifty to fifty-five, which is, which is typically your quiet suburb is what they say that, that decibel range is.
Actually, today I was provided information from Mr. Reader in, about some approvals that they've done with other municipalities. And two of them, I noticed with these planning board approvals that they received, that when they were up and running, the planning board or some that's me up, would go out there and listen to it and determine of what the noise decibels of not only just the AC, but battery noise, whatever noise is being generated from those would meet a certain standard that they could be satisfied with, or would they have to come back and address that?
Put up some sort of buffering?
Yeah, if it was required, right? Two of those approvals had that in there.
I think that's a great condition.
That could be border health, because we had that same thing.
He has a meter.
He has the meter? Yeah.
So, we could work with, see what, what, um, Jim wants, like what he would do?
Yeah, what would be satisfactory.
And, well, if he had that as a condition, then they have to come, you know, it'll...
Yeah, one of them actually, I thought was a very good point, and as you all know, when you have a quiet summer day and no car noise, no nothing, you, noise travels long distance.
Especially when all the trees are cut down.
One of the contacts specifically made sure that that was done on that type of day, when everything was quiet, you know. So, you're sitting on your deck, and that's, you know, yeah, or quiet.
So, I think that's a great condition, and we can talk to Jim about how he, if there's a special way to order it or something.
Right.
Our regulations, the new regulations have sound in it, that I took from other towns, so that could be a good base that Jim may be able to look at.
Need to make sure it's a condition, maybe just... Yeah, well, I'll, let me open it up so I can, we can get the comments, because this is what we're, being continued.
I didn't know if we were opened up yet. Longmont, I live on one oh four Colburn Road, I'm on the opposite side of the street where the driveway entrance is to the property. And I have to say, it'd be nice in the process of these construction projects that there are limitations put on the speed at which the vehicles entering the property can travel, and the times at which they're allowed to travel. Now, I, I would go so far as to say, twenty vehicles, trucks, per day, were going in and out of that driveway starting at seven AM in the morning, and they were not light duty. We had tractor trailer units, we had the carriers of the logging equipment, huge, huge pieces of equipment. And some of these trucks were, because it, there was no turnaround area for them, it would back in the length of that driveway with that stupid beeper going. It was just relentless noise.
How late would they come in?
Oh, they'd go up sometimes at eight o'clock.
So, we should pay, pay attention to those, the timing too of...
And this is not just a week, this was a year and a half, it was just going on and on.
They backed up that driveway, I drove up that driveway, that is a long way.
That's right. Good talent, because it wasn't perfectly straight.
Um, so...
Damon Anders.
Michelle McAfee at seventy-eight Partridge Hill Road. Um, so, as we know, my property is the one with the easement. So, to my dismay, I magically was at one of these meetings, because I was like, maybe I should start going to the town meetings when this all started. I would've never known about any of this, like, I never got an original letter about the very first meeting with this. So, I've been very frustrated, to say the least. I don't know where that comes from, from the town, but needless to say, there was nothing I could do about it. I went as far as, you know, putting up a stink, and it, it's an easement, it is what it is. But, I am extremely frustrated, and I don't know what to do about this, because I've, it was very specific in these meetings. was very specific in these meetings, Ernie, I don't care that he's not there anymore, it's the company itself, about it being one box at the top. First of all, I think that's ludicrous in and of itself, because it's, I mean, it's still my, I'm still paying for that property, but whatever. But now there's this other pad, I don't care if it's the solar company, I don't care if it's National Grid, that's not in the plan. I was here in the meeting when National Grid mentioned about moving the pole, the telephone pole, to have the thing rise, and that was, that was it. There was nothing, all of a sudden I see, now they were doing the same thing with multiple trucks, multiple workers, my husband and I work crazy hours, and, you know, they were in and out of the, in and out of the area. I had cars, to, you know, to my surprise, parking on our land, and they knew never to do that ever again once I talked to them. But I, you know, I, they were in my turnaround area, my driveway, I have like a turnaround area up there that we just recently put in, and it's like right, you saw it in the picture, it's like right next to that box. And then randomly, within the last couple of weeks, we look out there and they're putting these poles, the yellow poles, and I'm like, what in the world is this? I don't know how to go about doing this, because that's not in any of the plans. It's crazy to me, I don't, I, there's got to be something done, and, you know, from the town standpoint, like, or, that's not approved, and it wasn't discussed, you know?
We're doing everything we can to do on what we can legally do, but like I said, I advise that you go and get an attorney, and, because that's, any of that personal stuff is, and it's been done before, it isn't a new people sue all the time for this particular stuff, they went on your land and they shouldn't, and there's an approved set of plans to prove the difference, so.
And then the other thing, too, is the original telephone pole, I actually had sent Randy a picture of it, the original telephone pole was supposed to be removed that same day. They had said it was going to be like a one-day thing, and it was like a lot longer than that, that this telephone project happened. The original pole's still there, so I don't know if that's a thing or not, but, and then the clearing of the easement and the trees, my thing with that is, yeah, replant, but how long, what do you mean by that? Like, how long does it take to grow back?
A long time.
Like, you know, how about we put like existing trees there or something, or like, I don't know, it's just, it's crazy to me.
Yeah, so I think we would have to spec something that would definitely block the view, we've done that before. So, you know, we're talking, and trees putting back in there, which is enough to shield, they're not going to be little trees.
But they're not going to be twenty-foot trees either.
Right, yeah.
They're going to be, they're going to be trees that won't really potentially block all of it, but for now, it would be enough to block what you, what needs to be done. They're not going to get in there and plant two-foot trees.
And I do want to say on the record, just so, you know, I know that the town could probably support this, but the solar company did agree, Zero Point, I keep forgetting, so Zero Point did agree to do some type of screening there. Now, National Grid's in the works, so my driveway is like right there, and it's, I just want to have it on the record that they're going to stand by that, and that that's actually going to happen, whether it's a fence or something, okay?
They said it on video.
Yeah, because I can't, my driveway's right there, so a tree is going to be intrusive to that, so like a fence or something, but then that's going to be random to have one side fence, and then the rest of my property is in something, like, so it, I just want to make sure that that's followed, that whatever we decide is going to happen.
Normally, we have the resident work with the company to kind of find a mutual solution to the problems like this.
Before we approve it.
But we're not even, we're not even there yet.
Right, right.
Right now, we're here, and we're, we're a little bit away from any sort of approval or anything like that.
Do you know what size is of the box that's up there? Or do you know how big that box is?
Five by?
I don't know.
Six type of thing?
Yeah, I was going to say no more than ten by ten, so that five by six sense.
But how tall is it?
If I'm standing next to it, it'd be like, maybe like six feet or so, five feet.
It was supposed to be that big?
Well, with the pad, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, the pad raised it.
Yeah.
It just looked bigger than what I thought it was going to be.
I think it might be.
I mean, with the property, even though it's National Grid and everything, they should have been at least a field modification, so that we would have even been aware of this going on.
Do they need to do that uneniesment, though? With their equipment, uneniesment, you know, that's what they're going to say.
Well, it's not what was on the approved plan, so everybody at a public meeting looked at this plan and said, okay, you're going to build this, and then they don't build that, that should be at the very least a field modification, I mean, that's why we ended with any application.
Unfortunately, I think the utilities have a.
And if we don't feel comfortable.
We have a lot of opinion of what's uniesced.
But my other question, too, is the whole, the whole talk about it being easement is access, if they needed to, you know, go from that side of the project, so Partridge Hill roadside, through, those yellow poles are in the way, you know, they're not driving on my property to go around them, you know what I mean? Like, how do they get through? It just, it doesn't make sense.
I don't know, is it electrical easement only, strictly?
Yes, that's correct.
So it's all on ground service, so.
So the access to go back wouldn't happen that way? Okay.
That's why I was surprised that they cleared it so much.
Right.
Because they usually only clear enough to get a piece of equipment through there, the highway.
But it wasn't National Grid, that was the contractor.
Right.
Who decided that they wanted a big spot.
The strivers weren't real experienced.
They were backing down on that, they need some something.
Eighty Partridge Hill Road, I hope I understood this correctly, just correct me if I didn't, but it sounds like in March twenty nineteen, there's a regulation that says the battery has to be a hundred feet away, and now they were asking for a waiver around October twenty nineteen. I just wanted to say, I really hope that they are held to the regulation. I know it's so many hundreds of feet away from my house, but our property is really important to us, that's why we bought it. It's not like we don't care about the woods back there. I really hope they'll be held to at least a hundred feet away from the property.
Yep, and this is your property that goes all the way to there, and you have the right to use that all the way up to your property.
One last question, I could be jumping ahead, so this was built without it coming out of sixty-one A, agriculture preservation?
It wasn't supposed to be.
Excuse me?
It was not supposed to be.
So here they are again, they proceeded with construction.
Isn't that a condition on the, all the approvals have conditions that they need to come out of sixty-one A?
Prior to construction beginning?
Prior to the building permit.
Assessors may have to go after five years back.
Yeah, prior to an issue of.
Change of views.
There's a building permit checklist that there should be a.
So is this fall on the building department, that it was allowed?
I don't know, we'll have that discussion, we'll have that discussion.
I was going to say, we had a couple properties that did that, and they had to go back, correct, and send letters, and then they had to come, yes.
It was a big deal last time it happened, so I would assume that that would never happen again, so I don't know how that kind of.
I know in three cases, the property said we weren't aware of the fact that that needed to happen, now let us move forward, and so then we send basically letters that says this needs to happen by this date, blah, 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 yes.
Could you clarify what that meant, the discussion?
So sixty-one A is a land designation for agricultural land, so you pay less taxes, a lot less taxes by having it in sixty-one A. So when you remove the sixty-one A, you go back to pay regular normal taxes, like you pay on your home?
And then you go back five years.
Yes.
Well, I realized that he had that forested land, and it was protected, and he had to get a lower tax rate for, it was forty, forty-five years.
Yeah, so they'll go back five years, and they'll reassess, and they'll have to make that. And we're not sure how, did it not go sixty through sixty-one A? I didn't.
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda right now. I jumped ahead, sorry.
That should happen before building permits.
Yeah, I don't know.
And Kurt should know, and the assessors, doesn't, don't the building permits themselves have to sign off from all the departments?
No, only tax.
But the assessors should know, in honor of our plan, in this condition on our plan.
I was on border health, we have to sign off, but I don't know if Deb did, but taxes collected.
Usually they just initial, make sure the property ID's correct, but maybe.
A lot of times, it's just not realized that it hasn't been done, and until someone points it out that it hasn't been done, or there's a look back to it, correct, the property owner will say, well, I didn't realize it needed to be done.
Which is too bad, because, yeah, they should know better.
Can you send up a formal, an email to Kurt to just say this happened, and this isn't the first time, in a nice way, this is the first time it happened, and this is a, we need to have a control in place to make sure, and that building permit is the control in place to make it happen, and if we, if we don't have, if that control isn't utilized, then this is going to happen all the time, and we're going to always be in a mess.
I mean, it's almost a little bit bigger than that, I mean, maybe it makes the mountain out of mold, but I don't know how long ago they started this part, it was a year ago, and they go back five years, the town just lost a year.
Yeah.
Because we're doing it tonight, not last year.
So there's a price tag on it now.
Yeah, so it's actually a loss of tax revenue by it not being done in the correct manner.
Through the chair, just to clarify, so the land has been taken out of chapter sixty-one for the area that has the panels. The agenda tonight is, there's additional area that we're taking out for, like your so-called easements around the structure itself, so the land was taken out of chapter sixty-one back.
Okay.
Good.
This was a big deal, many a couple of years ago.
Yes.
One a big piece of things. We just, it was just missed, so.
So there's more land that's needed for these that were not, so what extra land was not?
That's on the agenda.
It's still in sixty-one.
That brings up a good question, I don't know what it is, because if the whole parcel was brought out of sixty-one A per this project, well, now there's an additional based on this, seven point four six acres, where's that seven point four six acres coming from?
Do you know?
From what I understand, the assessor's office has been hit with some politicians trying to help the farmer, so they only have to take out exactly what the panels are sitting on.
That's correct.
So it is getting larger, yes.
So if they're adding the battery storage area or whatever, now that property gets added to the original.
Yeah, it should, as well as the perimeter, and any disturbed land should come out of sixty-one A, and they should have to pay on it.
And the theory behind that is if the farmer owns a hundred fifty acres, and they're only doing twenty acres of solar, why should they have to take the whole parcel out just for that piece? But if they're making money, so on whatever piece they're, in essence, making money off of, that's the piece that should come out, because they're no longer farming dairy cattle on it.
Yeah, I can see there's a lot to farm.
But I would think that the equipment, that it's on, should also come out, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, disturbed land, exactly.
It brings me to another interesting point that I've just found out. A lot of times, whenever you talk to any of these solar people, they say roughly two acres per megawatt. That's what we heard from Bill Scanlon.
Yes.
It's more upwards of four acres per megawatt. Who is actually going out there and re-surveying? Nobody. So for the sake of us and the dollar amounts, you know, let them have to prove us wrong. Go with four acres per megawatt, and that should be the standard formula, because obviously every parcel is different.
Right.
Because you may have to take more trees down to get access back there. We don't have the staff to double-check, so if they don't like it, then they can pursue it, get a licensed person and.
Okay.
To survey it, so for the sake of Deb and the assessors, it should be four acres per megawatt minimum.
Right, are we, do we want to, are we good with discussion? Do we want to just continue? This is a lot of research and a lot of things.
First of all, I'd like to make a motion that we talked to Curtis and get a cease and desist on any work that goes until we get a plan to remedy the foliage.
On both plans?
On, well, let's, yeah, on both plans, so.
Both of them, yeah.
On both of them.
I would second that. On my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Curtis tomorrow?
He's actually on vacation this week, so it won't be till Monday.
Paul has a question.
I'm just curious, is Zero Point working on other projects in town currently? I'm kind of seeing a track record.
Well, we are now. We are now.
We hadn't seen anything up until this point.
Yeah, that's fair.
They had worked on other properties that went.
And there is a lawsuit to remember, too.
I could say this, if I owned a solar farm and it didn't have batteries, I would be requesting to put the batteries in, because it's going to.
We've said that all along.
It's going to increase. So in time, they will be back.
These batteries are coming to every field.
And the DOE are incented to coming, which is set at town meeting, and this is just the tip.
All I'm saying, Rob, is they're doing work, they're violating conditions that have been placed on them.
Right.
I don't care if that's, if that was you, right? Which obviously you wouldn't be, right?
Well, no, it's, right now, there's nothing in the process such as an occupancy permit to where, to where if you're selling a house, you can't, the bank isn't going to give you the money unless the occupancy permit is signed off by everybody. There is no sign off here. No one has to sign anything before they plug in. No one says, all right, is it okay for me to plug in? Has everything been done?
Yeah, we have a certificate to turn on, we have a plug-in.
You have to do a process.
Certificate to operate. That's not true, I've had to sign off on ones that have been complete before they could get up and running.
Yeah.
Perfect, let me do it.
All right, so you do have that?
Yes.
So has this one been signed off?
No.
Okay.
That's why it's not running yet.
Oh, this one on Colburn, is it operating?
No.
And the one at Jack's, is that operating?
No.
Oh, boy, that's a lot of money sitting there, doing nothing.
Well, they had the freeze, the grid froze it, remember, till they could figure out, there was too much, too much solar energy in the lines, so they had a freeze till National Grid could figure out new substations.
Yeah, but these guys should be making the argument of, we now have batteries, so we're not going to put that much through during peak time. We're going to be storing it, and you can have it at midnight, or eight o'clock at night, or seven or eight, eight o'clock in the morning, when the sun's really is enough. So it should free up space with the batteries.
Well, National Grid's arguing.
But we shouldn't allow the batteries until we get everything that we need.
I've been saying about National Grid, basically, there's too much solar production, they don't have the infrastructure to handle it, which is why they're putting kibosh on a lot of things, or holding them up until substations start getting built, because they can't handle the power that all these solar facilities are generating.
Right, they receive some money upfront to build it. What they're not getting is the energy certificate that they sell, that's the valuable thing, not only just selling of the energy, it's the certificate.
The tax credit, right then?
Well, no, it's, it's a certificate that they get, yeah, that they are mandated, and they actually are like on the stock market, selling.
I have a little quick question for you. Why does Colburn Road in particular have the cooling units for the batteries? And is there any alternative to that?
I think you're referring to the HVA system, they both have them, each unit has a HVA.
Is that typical or standard?
Yes.
Yeah, temperature.
Where is this power leading to? Like, where is it?
The grid, the National Grid, like, the grid.
Okay.
I guess if that makes sense. You can answer that.
I think she's asking who's benefiting of the National Grid.
Yeah, it goes back to the poles, and then I don't know the substation off the top of my head, but it goes back to a substation within either Charlton or another neighborhood town.
Charlton isn't getting any sort of a discount in electricity or anything like that.
Companies could buy those credits to lower their carbon footprint.
Appeared.
Appeared.
Paul has a question. Continue the public hearing?
Second. On my favor? No, are we good? So in the meantime, we'll set up a meeting, we'll get all the right people in the room to make sure we know what questions to ask, and we do what we need to do to set a very solid precedent for all the ones that will be coming in the future, and I, I do believe that the, what you're in process of getting, that, that, the kind of the disposal, the bond amount, that figure will be huge to fix, to be able to fix all the mistakes that we've made from lack of knowledge. We have an A and R? Actually, do we want to move the A and R down, since, and we'll do Ringgold. So we have the Ringgold site plan annual extension request.
So here tonight, thank you all for having me. Again, this is the second time you're getting me after doing a morning meeting in the Berkshire, so I apologize if I'm not at my peak. But Randy had reached out a while back and had let me know that the permit was coming up for expiration, suggested that I come in and just talk with you guys and make sure that, you know, everyone's up to date on where we're doing and what we're going on with down there. with down there. So, we opened up the facility on Veterans Day, November eleventh, was our first day of sales. It's been open since then, it's been open without incident. We've had no instances of any sort of, you know, improper entry, any instances of diversion, any instances of any, any monkey business, just to give it all sort of a catch-all title. You know, it's just been sort of the run-of-the-mill, there's been a few individuals in the town who are never quite happy with us to be there to begin with, and they've let that be known, and, you know, I think we've sort of come to our separate peace with everything there. Aside from that, you know, really, our biggest scramble was just making sure that we got the things snowplowed, and John Simons of Lon Arus has been great for that, he's been fantastic. So, the facility's fully built out, it's fully operational, it's operating medically, has been for about two and a half months or so now. It's been getting fantastic reviews, the customers love it. What we've really realized is most of our customers are just, just sort of what we always thought, repeat business from people who live in Charlton or around Charlton. You know, we started to see same as we also had predicted, you know, they key into their patient care advocate, and they say, hey, I really love going to Ross, and I'm gonna go to Ross every time I come in, and, you know, if he wasn't there today, don't worry, I'll just come back tomorrow. You know, that's, picking names out of that, picking names out of that. You're the first one, the next example will be done. So, you know, everything is going well there. We have the parking up front, we've been parking our employees up front, just to make the lot look a little livelier. Medical is very, very, very slow. A lot of that is because, you know, there are a good amount of other medical shops in the area, Curaleaf is medical, Cultivate is medical, Good Chem, I think in Worcester is medical, I don't know if Botanist is only medical. So, there's a good amount surrounding here that are medical only. I think the closest adult-use only is Caroline's Cannabis down at Oxbridge.
They cultivate in those areas, too.
They're closer, but they're a split license, they're adult, they're adult and medical, so it will be. So, the way, so we were all sort of Cultivate, us, Curaleaf came in a little bit later, we're sort of the legacies, the vertically integrated original medical companies that are now transitioning into the adult-use market versus someone like Caroline, who was one of the very first, I think she was the second or third standalone adult-use place that's been licensed. So, that's the sort of newer cohort that's coming through. Aside from that, as you guys know, we finally got everything squared away with DOT and those retention ponds. The retention ponds have never once had water in them since they've been built, but God bless them, they're there. And it's, I just have to say, it blows my mind, it comes from the drain to a retention pond, to a second retention pond that then goes across the street to that sort of swampy area, and it's like, well, that's, the pipe originally just went from the street to there, now it goes pipe to pond to pond to there. Whatever.
It's for the ducks.
The engineers need jobs.
They gotta make, they gotta make their money, and, you know, Graves gotta make their peer review funds, but all good, all good, it's all in the past now. So, we have that, you know, as you know, we own all three properties there through the holding company, AdMas, that was originally designed to avoid that whole pilot program, and so instead of doing that, let's just hold the properties under a for-profit, pay our fair share of property tax, and square it away that way. So, we have that back parking lot that's technically on the lot of Five Masonic Home Road. We can use that for any employee parking, any overflow parking, anything we need like that. And then, we've also entered into a contract with Ted for, you know, that little tan metal building across the street from his? We get all the parking area, everything that's not that metal building. So, we have that, pay him a couple hundred bucks a month for that, and then if, God forbid, we ever have beyond, beyond, beyond overflow, we can park the employees down there and leave both top lots open for everybody to park in. And that, the lot for renting from Ted, you could probably fit fifty cars in there, big old thing. So, that's pretty much where we're at in terms of Charlton operations. Everything's humming along according to plan. Because of inclement weather and because of my own mis-scheduling, I wrote the thing down, I think it was on a Tuesday, and I had it in my calendar as a Wednesday, I've missed both marijuana advisory committee meetings since then, one my fault, one the snow's fault. But we got another one coming up in January, so I'll be able to fill everybody in on that front as to how everything's going. But yeah, it's just been fantastic, great reviews from the patients, primarily people from Charlton working in the shop, and just, you know, smooth, easy sailing. And that's pretty much exactly what's gonna happen until the state approves our adult-use application. Just keep on doing exactly what we're doing, probably increase the staffing a little bit. What we've been doing right now, because it is so slow, we're down to pretty much a skeleton crew there, and everyone else is working up in North Brookfield so that they can keep their hours. That's why when I walked in, I got a few comments over there, the smell, we're on harvest day today, so I was walking through all the, lingered a little bit. We just, first day that we did a double harvest, taking down two full rooms, so about eight thousand square feet of plants. So, that was all hands-on-deck type of thing. So, a lot of the team from Charlton's been up there lending a hand, particularly on the trimming side, getting everything going so that they can keep their hours, because a big thing we wanted to do, we have no idea when the state's gonna approve us. We've done everything we can do to put it in their hands, and now we're just hurry up and wait. Last thing we ever wanted to do was lay anybody off or go to reduced hours, we said, let's keep everything steady, and just, you can move up to North Brookfield and do your hours up in North Brookfield. Nothing from what you see today, the only, one thing is gonna change, we're gonna take down that banner that says medical patients only.
Yep.
We had that banner up, because we were getting about fifteen, ten, fifteen people a day would stop in, hey, are you guys open? When are you opening? You know, that type of thing. So, since the banner, that's knocked it down to phone calls only, which has been great. But, you know, we had a little thing, we took all their names down, everyone who came in, so that way when we do go through the conversion, we can reach out and say, hey, you know, come on down, come check it out, you know, maybe do a soft opening with them the day beforehand, same way as we did the soft opening here. But aside from taking down that banner, nothing's gonna change operationally, nothing's gonna change visually, nothing's changing with the lot, we're a hundred percent done with construction, we've got all the parking we need, we've got all the traffic control we need. The interior of the store, nothing's gonna change, right now, every POS is open. When we change for adult use, the way it's gonna work is two of the POSs will be dedicated medical stations, one will be an express, and those will be the ones closest to the door, one will be an express pickup station where people can phone ahead, place an order, we fulfill it for takeout. We have it basically sitting in a package, and starting in January, all the packaging, not only the cannabis packaging, but the external packaging, what they call the exit bag, will be child-resistant itself. So, it's basically, it's a Ziploc, and if you try to open, no kids are watching, it's nine o'clock at night. If you try to open, especially planning board meeting, you try to open the Ziploc the way a normal Ziploc opens, it won't, it's locked. I've literally tried to rip the things apart, I've had people standing on the other side, it won't rip apart. But if you go underneath the seam and pull it from underneath the seam, it pops right open. But you have to have the dexterity to get underneath the seam, lock your fingernail in there and pop the thing apart. So, we'll be switching to those in January, we have those ordered. The big thing that's been holding us up, pretty much like every other manufacturer, is Chinese New Year's in February, all the products come from China. So, everyone's jamming to get their orders in before Chinese New Year. If you're not gonna get it by mid-January, you're probably not gonna get it till end of March because of the backlog, and then everyone in China takes two weeks off, and then it goes into reproduction again. So, these are some of the things we never thought we'd be up against, doing a development facility, we're waiting on our shipping bags because of Chinese New Year. But, yeah, something new every day. So, you know, that's basically all that's gonna change, is we'll have that express pickup option, we'll have one of the spots in the lot, will be striped off and say, you know, express pickup only, that way we can have just quick in-out for whoever's coming in there. Been a pretty popular option at a lot of other facilities. But what I could really say is the closest analog, and pretty much exactly what you'll see, almost exactly comparable square footage, very similar in terms of where it is in the town, a dual-use license, Curaleaf and Oxford, it's gonna be the exact same thing that they have, it's gonna look exactly like that. We're gonna be different in the fact that they have an adult-use side and a medical side of their buildings. That was just an earlier regulation when they had very first started. The state said you needed to have a physical barrier, some people interpreted that to the extreme of a wall and door. The state then said, no, bollard, like you see at the movie theaters, fine, just something so they can't wander over, so not everyone who built out walls and doors, type of thing. So, we'll have the bollards in there. One of the things we've realized is the original concept we had of a seated waiting room, no one's really doing that anymore, what everyone does is zigzag in the waiting room, and we have the bollards to be able to set that up, and then, you know, step into the facility and zigzagged in the facility as well. So, we're not anticipating, you, you know, I have to talk to Deputy Chief and figure out what our exact fire marshal's capacity is there, I know we have it somewhere in the building, but figure out what that is, and we definitely have more room in there than whatever our, you know, stated capacity is, so we wouldn't have to have any issues in terms of lines. Really, that's, that's pretty much it, everything's gonna be exactly the same, just when people come up and ask if we're open for adult use, we won't have to turn them away. But we're built out, we're done, that's all you're gonna see, that's all you're gonna see from us, and couldn't be happier with the way everything's turned out.
It's funny with, when we, when Lester All happened, there was all these news stories, and it was really insane.
The end of the world.
And then, when, I mean, I drive through Oxford and by, is it Curaleaf?
Yeah, yeah. Right down by the high school there, yeah.
And there's like a handful of cars in the parking lot.
No, nobody worries off.
Are they doing offsite parking there? Or are they doing...
I mean, I don't know.
So, they do, they have, so if you drive down there, you'll see, coming from Charlton, Curaleaf's on your right, and there's a gravel lot to the left. They have that the same way we have Ted's lot, it's there if they need it, but I've never seen any cars in it.
It's been your experience, it seems like they're all leveling off now, you don't see that big influx you did when it all first started.
What I always said is, imagine if we only had one liquor store this side of the Rockies, not just in Massachusetts, but one liquor store this side of the Rockies, like what the lines for that would be like. You know, yeah, you can look at Boston and Meta and Brookline, you know, twenty-five-hundred people a day, it's the only dispensary in a city of four point one million people in the greater Boston metro area. So, you know, the fact that they're still at twenty-five-hundred people a day, I think they're kind of underperforming, hear that from me. So, you know, the way we really look at it is, there's enough draw now in the area that it's not, people are traveling, you know, for Lester, people are driving down from Lynn and Salem to get there type of thing. It's just not, there's fifteen they have to pass before they get here. The other side of it is, because of Green Gold's success on the wholesale market, we have our product in a significantly larger footprint than Charlton, so if people are really looking for that Green Gold product, really want that Green Gold product, there's probably somewhere a lot closer to their home where they can get it than in Charlton. Charlton's always gonna have the most competitive price point of any of the Green Gold products, it'll also have the widest selection, anything new, anything limited, run, anything special. Charlton's always been envisioned as our showcase and our showcase of a facility, but we've always been a primarily wholesale-based business, that's our bread and butter, is wholesale. So, Charlton, you know, in our best mind, it's a spot, if someone stops in and sees something there really cool, they wanna purchase, that's fantastic, but we're not making our money off driving traffic into that Charlton store, which makes it a lot easier for everybody. Aside from that, the only thing, you know, in the spring, we'll probably redo some of the landscaping, some of it didn't quite make it, so we'll replant some of the hydrangeas, whatnot, that type of thing.
Route twenty has a lot of salt, so you wanna pay attention to that, what you're putting up.
We tried to do it all in high drainage areas, so that it would, you know, go up to a berm where the plantings are and that type of thing. Yeah, we have some hydrangeas, and like black-eyed Susans, and I think some tiger lilies, so whatever didn't make it through the winter, we'll just replant in the spring.
It's a really good zone for hydrangeas, is it? I don't know, we've never, no.
It's, it's what was on the plan, and we were in this, so this cannabis control commission had called us and said, basically, you need to get a, this was back, I think in like, I don't even remember when it was, but not the last time I talked to you guys, but the time before that, CCC had called, it was like, you need to have all of your stuff squared away, like within seventy-two hours. So, the last thing we had remaining was posting a landscaping bond and doing the landscaping. The plan called for, I think, hydrangeas, native trees, and daylilies or tiger lilies, and it was just like, okay, Home Depot, what do you have? We'll take all of it, install it in the ground, like fantastic, we're done, we fulfill our obligations. Because that was just that last little piece of the puzzle. So, now that that's passed, we can actually get in there, do some nice landscaping, some type of thing. Aside from that, there's some interior renos going on on that Five Masonic Home property, just like light repainting, that type of stuff, nothing structural.
So, the Five Masonic Home was the property behind it?
That's the office building behind it. So, any, you know, construction vehicles or anything like that that's seen in there, basically, we've just been using it for storage for the past two years, it's gotten kind of dingy, kind of scuffed inside, that type of thing.
Was that part of the site plan?
No, it wasn't, I'm just bringing it up just...
So, it wasn't part of the original site plan?
No, it wasn't part of the site plan, it's a separate lot.
The properties were all shown, the three lots?
Right, so we showed, we showed all three lots, because we planned on using some of the parking back there, but just saying, you know, we have, by code, we have sufficient parking for the dispensary in front of the dispensary, we were just showing it as an illustration of, oh, we also have this overflow back there, just in case.
Now, is any of that rendered out, or you...
No, we're just, that's why we're fixing it back up, hopefully someone will wanna come in there, but we've actually had a good amount of interest, because people are saying, hey, there'll be good foot traffic to a dispensary, you know, I'd like to set something up there, so...
We want a restaurant, so folks...
If we can get it right, well, hey, well, so I meant to ask about that. I know, I know this is a bit of an aside, but that Milk and Cafe, what's, is that, has anyone been there? Is that good? I just saw it opened up the other day.
Everybody loves it.
Yeah?
The new, the new little coffee shop.
Yeah, yeah, right across the street from us, I gotta check it out. Nice.
Not to get off the subject, though, through the chair, I'm concerned about our zoning in that area, because I'm not sure that other property is zoned for retail marijuana use, that our zoning has changed.
No, we don't, we don't use it for any retail marijuana use.
But can you use a property as parking for a business that doesn't comply to that ceiling?
We have all the parking that we need by code for the business in front of the business.
For the, for the medical part, I think we had some major concerns over the retail area when we did that initial plan approval, and that...
So, the town didn't have, we came in before any marijuana zoning was done, we came in under central business zoning, and we fulfill the requirements for our square footage based off central business zoning.
Did this subdivision, was there a subdivision that froze the other lot, though?
No, it's always been split, we bought them this three split lots.
But I do remember the parking was an issue, when we looked at the business, and at the time, you were stating medical numbers and medical traffic going in there.
Right.
Retail's gonna be a lot higher than the medical traffic.
I, so I disagree with that. So, we had actually projected on our side that we would be seeing about seventy-five medical patients a day, we're seeing probably about ten. So, I think those numbers were wildly inflated. We also had, under our plan, I believe, approved the ability to do a hundred and seventy-five visits under our traffic plan per day. You're not seeing that at Curaleaf, you're not seeing that at Cultivate, you're not seeing that at other places. So, I'm very, very confident that we're well within what was already not only approved as, because when we got the original traffic plan approved, it was done with this exact situation in mind, it was done both with medical and recreational, that's why we did five revisions of it, that's why they kept going back and forth.
I know the, the original approval was, was for medical, and we stated that. So, I think any concern going forward is we have to look at the traffic study again, knowing, because at that point, retail was, you know, insane and out there, we didn't know what it was gonna bring.
Yeah.
So, we said, okay, this is good for medical, we agree with your numbers, when you ready to go retail, we need to come back and we need to do a better study, because at that cause at that time, we'll know better what the business can handle and-
You're gonna see about half of what the original study predicted.
So you do plan on submitting a site plan or?
Well, so the-
The site plan is made, I mean, if you want-
We've submitted a site plan, the condition said a modification too, so I'm not gonna submit a new site plan or anything like that.
Yeah, actually, to answer your question, it was already, somebody, in the recent past, somebody asked me about that property. And both, actually, all three parcels are zoned the same, I think, actually.
All central business.
Community business, I'm trying to-
Yeah, CB.
But CB is-
All three parcels are actually zoned community, as far as the off-site parking, I don't have any answer to that question.
But only one lot was froze, so the correct?
I don't, I don't think any lot was ever froze.
See, I think the site plan showed all three lots, so, and they listed all three lots in the application. Was that, that-
Okay, so right now, it's pre-existing non-conforming. In that particular lot that's on Wester Road. The lot that's actually on the Sonic Home Road, there's no business there. So there is no pre-existing non-conforming business. If you were to open a retail shop there, it would be strictly non-conforming and you wouldn't be able to do it.
No, of course.
So what I'm questioning is, and this is a question for Randy to find out, is a parking lot that supports a business that's non-conforming allowed?
Is it approved based on use?
So I would ask this as a corollary question. Does Charlton have any code that specifically says the number of spots required for a cannabis business versus a retail business of a certain size?
So that's, I guess that's the next phase, is we need to look at-
Because we do fulfill the code on retail, we fulfill it easily. And whether we are selling shampoo, shingles, or soap, you know, retail is retail is retail. The fact that it happens to be cannabis, that's a legal product that we're selling, the same as if we're selling sandwiches.
Pay attention to the new, the new site plan that's gonna come in for for recreational is something we're gonna have to pay attention to.
It's not even a site plan, it's a modification.
It's a modification, and the modification's just gonna say exact verbatim.
But one thing you'll have to provide for us is whatever that building on the other lot's gonna be used for. If you're trying to include that as part of your parking area, we have to make sure that you have adequate parking for that building as well.
What we've, that building has more than sufficient parking for. What we've always said is our building, as approved, has sufficient space for retail. There was never any mention of, well, this is parking for marijuana, or parking for medical marijuana versus recreational marijuana. It was approved as a retail unit under five thousand square feet in the central business zoning, fulfilled all parking requirements. It still fulfills all parking requirements, we haven't increased the square footage, we haven't changed the use, we've stayed in the same code. So that original approval still holds through. If we're leasing additional satellite lots in town, leasing it from ourselves, I mean, we're not saying that this is an integral part of the property, it's held under a different entity.
Yeah, but if we, if, if, if so many parking spaces are required and you don't have them and you have to move off-site.
Well, we do though.
That off, we don't, that hasn't been determined yet, I mean-
It wasn't our previous site plan approval, it was determined that we had sufficient parking, else it wouldn't have been approved.
It was determined for medical use, and I'm not saying that it's gonna be-
It was approved for retail under five thousand square feet.
All the time, so we'll, when we get to the site plan, we don't need to argue tonight about it. But when we get to the site plan, we'll discuss. I think in the back of my mind, I was thinking Lester, and now I'm thinking Kiraleef. And maybe we'll look at it and we'll say it's good, and the professionals that, you know, whoever reviews-
Dude, it's not that it does what the engineer says.
What I'm just trying to avoid is, I've had to tell my plan there, we've spent probably close at this point to about two hundred thousand dollars on studies for that property. The last thing I wanna do is say you have to do studies that confirm the studies that have previously been approved are still valid.
Okay, well, we approved a medical, but I, that, I don't-
But some of the studies were just generalized, like wastewater, you know, flow and things like that, it doesn't matter whether it's medical or recreational.
Yeah, I don't think the stormwater stuff, I don't think that-
No, but that's, but, so, but stormwater parking is all-
I think you have like ten-
We have fourteen parking spots.
Fourteen, but-
And by code, we were required to have, I think, something like ten or twelve.
Two are handicapped.
Two are handicapped, one's a handicapped van and one's a handicap.
One of the things, this isn't necessarily accountable, but the Mass DOT and their approval, I mean, they put the word medical in bold letters in-
Right, well, that was for curb cuts. So that was, but that's separate, that's the purview of DOT, and we're dealing separately with DOT in that regard. So wholly separate than anything tonight, because, believe me, if you guys had control over the curb cuts, I would've come to you a long time ago for help on that.
Yeah, what I was saying also on the other part is the other parcel, if you're gonna use that building as a restaurant, we have to take in consideration how many building, parking spaces are needed for a restaurant, for the building on the other lot.
Oh, a hundred percent.
So we have to take that into consideration, whatever the usage, we have to-
All I want is compliance, we have a compliant property that was approved as compliant for retail use under five thousand square feet. The fact that it was medical marijuana was, as I understand it, not germane to that original parking discussion. It was germane to traffic discussions, it was germane to security flow discussions. But traffic from day one, and we can go back and check the minutes, traffic from day one had always been, does this lot meet the sufficient requirements for the size of this building? And then the secondary question was, will you need to engage other lots? It was always, okay, you meet it for your building size at this space, but do you have to take on some other lots as satellite temporary overflow? We've always said we're more than willing to do that, and we're demonstrating that with the two we have, the one behind the building and the one across from Ted's.
And there might not be any problem, it's just something that, that I think in the back of all of our minds, that parking situation. I don't think anybody needs to-
I'm not trying to be hostile, I'm just trying to-
Any sort of, you know, and as the planning board, we're very fair, we've always been very fair, and I think-
Of course.
Unless you put in battery storage, no.
We got no-
Don't do that.
We got, we got no batteries, we got no solar panels, it's so shady there, we can't put anything in.
At least ask if you're gonna dump.
No, 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 nothing, nothing, nothing.
We are looking forward to you coming with, coming back to us. We would love for you to open up and bring some revenue into the town and-
Absolutely, you guys get twice as much money when we open.
Right, absolutely, so, thank you for coming in, so do we wanna-
Is it all open for practice?
Sure.
The, as I understand it, is what, how it's read in the approval for the original marijuana licenses, it's the medical only. And at the time, community business, the way that property was zoned, was an allowed use. Then zoning got changed, was it last year or the year before in October? I think it was the year before in October, is when it got changed, to where marijuana sales are only allowed in IG, IG. And also, what got approved was, there can't be any more than two retail outlets in the town. So we know that the fourscore has been issued one. The question is on VGG, is that the correct acronym? Is, are we still holding a retail for them?
Well, there isn't any left. So Green Gold and Fourscore each has one, and there's only two, and it is?
Well, I can't, when you say that, cause my interpretation would be if there's only, if we can only have two outlets, because the cannabis is broken down into A and B, so, or let's call it, which what it is, is medical and then retail. So actually, you'd be allowed two Ms and two Rs. So Fourscore has an M and an R. VG, G, was gonna have, they were gonna have, they wanted retail, I don't think they wanted medical. Well, we were told many times by a former-
They did in the very beginning.
Town administrator.
And they changed it, so they're not-
They modified, they were going to, but then they decided not to.
The site plan that they had currently in front of us had no retail.
I believe the host agreement gives them a retail, but it was never approved at all.
So what are you, are we saying that?
They don't have one.
So we're saying that that does not exist? Okay, so is there a waiting list of people of who has applied for these licenses?
The licenses that we don't have?
Of the medical.
The licenses that there's not left on?
What people do in my position is, as the people running these projects, you'll call the town first, and you'll say, do you have any licenses available? If they say no, you move on to the next town, you don't say, hey, hold on a couple of years and see if they fail.
You guys have done a nice job with that building down there. Again, I remember one of them, Sarge Bow, I'm going back forty years ago.
About a million and a half of them in that building so far.
Remember the pizza place? The auto shop.
We say pizza shop on our side, we try to keep it nice and PG, we say it's a pizza shop.
You guys have done a nice job. So, fast forward to where we are today, is the planning board approved the medical license and approved the site plan for medical, and I think you were rather emphatic that it was medical only. Zoning has changed. There is no, there is no zoning protection down there, there's no subdivision that was filed that gives them eight years of protection.
Site plan gives them two?
I don't think site plan gives you squat, doesn't give you anything.
So what we actually have as protection is a separate state law, chapter ninety-four G, which because we held our licenses prior to July first, twenty seventeen, we have a byright conversion to adult use as long as we stay at that location.
According to the state, but not according to the town.
Well, the AG has told the town that that's the way it works, we went through this last year.
Well, no, no.
It's the same way that the state tells the town how many licenses they can do.
That's right, yeah.
They would, they would be grandfathered under that rule, and they would be issued a license, whether we had any available or not.
But they're not grandfathers for zoning, cause zoning, that zoning was changed.
So the state law also says that anywhere that allows a medical marijuana dispensary to operate has to allow a recreational dispensary to operate on that same lot, within that same zoning.
Okay, and so has that been tested yet?
The Attorney General's written a letter in support of it.
Who kind of care what he's, has it been tested?
You're more than welcome to sue us, you're more than welcome to sue us.
Okay, I'm not suing anybody, okay?
That's all I can say.
Today, okay.
Tomorrow, next week, at any time, I'm confident in our case.
All right, the thing is, is, I'm sure that the citizens are gonna be saying, I thought we passed zoning so that this couldn't happen. Cause that was the purpose of taking it out of community business and move it to IG, because you put it in much more remote areas with the IG. And planning board, do what you wanna do, you and your company will have to do what you have to have to do, but I'm just saying, I believe it's an issue.
I think you're kinda asking, you're, it's two separate issues. You're talking about one based on the quantity the town can have.
Correct.
The other, what you're bringing up is where it can be done in the town.
Is the zoning.
Right, so-
They're, they're-
They were already there, so you can't tell them, well, we changed the zoning so we don't allow it, that you gotta move.
So they are pre-existing non-conforming.
No, no one's telling them to move, all I was saying is what the planning board told them from day one, this is medical only.
No, I understand that.
For a permit, so, hey, hey. I got friends who want you to, okay? All right, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me one way or the other, but I wish you luck, and the thing is, is the town certainly could use the income. And if you have a agreement, a host agreement?
We've had a host agreement since twenty sixteen, I think. That covers maybe twenty seventeen, but it covers what we specifically wrote in that host agreement. We went through this with town council, with John, and with everybody else. It covered, and we used the specific language, any licensed cannabis facility, because we didn't know at the time what the language would be for adult use or recreational. It was always intended that it would be a dual-use facility. What we had said at the time is we can't make any commitments about what we're gonna do, because we don't, the law didn't exist yet. So we can't say we're gonna open adult use, because how do we go for us to do so?
Attorney General's dealing with these host agreements, and that's still under investigation.
What's off topic, but?
Yeah, let's, you put, we'll, yeah, I think that we're, we need to be careful about.
Okay.
Okay, can we review the original site plan approval?
Yeah, actually, all three lots are listed on that application, I have it right here, and all three lots are listed on the application. So they did include all the lots with the original approval, they did just show the building on the one road.
We'd always said from day one that that might be overflow.
I mean, you automatically ran that for two years with the site plan, but just need to be, I, I think everything will, even the traffic will be fine.
Yeah, I wanna work with you guys completely, I wanna, I wanna come to a compliance meeting.
Cover all the bases.
I think it's actually working out in your favor that time has passed, and some of these other facilities, you can see they aren't, they aren't like Lester's was.
Be careful how loudly you say that, how much time has passed.
No, I mean, but a year's time on a lot has changed.
No, if we were the first ones to open, you know, in Massachusetts, I'm sure we'd be having a very different discussion tonight. I'm also sure Charlton would have a couple hundred thousand dollars in the bank from host community payments.
There'd be a room full of people with pitchforks here.
Or alternatively, there'd be a room full of people saying that we've hired half the town, we have North Brookfield. We're at our next cohort of hiring, we're gonna break a hundred people in North Brookfield, we're the third largest employer in town. So we're moving ahead, we're moving forward on this. We wanna do the exact same thing for Charlton, obviously, we don't have the same footprint in Charlton as we have in North Brookfield, but we wanna bring that same passion and same success.
On cultivation.
Yeah, well, we, with the amount of money we've put into that building, we're not going anywhere.
We've got a lot of industrial there that-
Someone needs to use-
I'm more than happy to help someone else get in there, I don't only work for Green Gold, I'm more than happy to help someone else get in there, but for Green Gold, they're staying put.
Especially if they have restaurants.
If I, I'll cut you a deal, I'll get a restaurant in there, we'll call it square earth parking, it's all good.
Trader Joe's restaurant.
Don't do it on videos, come on.
Oh, good, you know, you know I'm kidding, you know I'm being facetious.
Trader Joe's might not fit, small, a little baby one.
You'll have to field day with Trader Joe's, they intentionally make their parking lots tiny and hard to navigate, so they always look busy. Guys, that last with the Trader Joe's parking lot.
Really?
I'll still take one.
Try, go to the Trader Joe's in Cambridge and try to get out of there without scratching your car.
So let's figure out this extension, let's just, I gotta read it, okay. So they are asking for an extension to-
It's a one year.
A one-year extension to January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one?
No.
Am I wrong?
Yeah, in twenty twenty.
Yeah, January twenty.
I'm sorry, January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Thanks for me.
Okay, but. Why is, they're all, they're done with everything, why are we extending?
Because they hadn't come, they, they were actually just giving themselves a space to final out everything with the original approval. So they didn't wanna close it out yet.
Okay.
Well, we're not doing any more work, we're fully built.
Winter time and everything, so this way it buys them time to complete everything they wanna complete in the spring.
Oh, that landscaping and stuff. And it will, and it will lock that land in the grant follow-up for the two years, cause site plan holds a two-year freeze on the land and another extension to the, will give them that freeze for an additional year, so we don't have to worry about any argument back and forth with the, with the land zone correctly.
Perfect, works perfectly for me, guys, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you.
Can we have a motion? I'll make a motion to accept. The extension.
Second.
All right, Hannah?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay.
Now I say thank you so much, have a great night.
Thank you too. Do we have any other public stuff that we wanna, do you wanna do?
We need to do affinity.
Do you wanna do affinity and we'll come back for other things?
Yeah, we have an extension request for affinity solar as well.
There you go.
When is their site plan expire for infinity?
May twenty-two?
Yeah, actually, theirs expires in April, this is as a result of the timing of getting the answers on what they had to do as far as moving forward with the approval of the solar project, and their attorney felt that it's supposed to be constructed in two years, and obviously April was right around the corner, and they can't do it in that period of time, so that's why they're requesting the extension, because they could complete the project.
We respectfully request an additional two years' time to complete construction, bring in the new completion deadline to May first, two, twenty twenty-two. There's a whole entire letter, but-
We only do one year extensions.
Yeah, we can only, you do the two years, and then after that, it's only good for one year, so.
They'll have to do it again next year, I mean.
They'll have to do it again next year.
So this is, this is the one on Brookfield Road?
Right.
Seven five Brookfield, yeah.
By the, by the highway, is that the one that abouts?
Yes.
Okay, so they wanna go, they still wanna c- the May date, can we do that? Or would it be one year from today?
No, one, they're just getting ahead of time, so they get it done.
So we'll do the-
Seven five one, five nine two thousand one.
So to May first, twenty twenty-one?
Correct.
And then, next time, they could just send an email, they don't have to do a formal-
Oh, their attorney, I think he was just trying to cross his T's and dot his I's, make sure it was done properly.
Do we have a motion too?
So I just have a question, so this, the site plan that we approved back in the day, although, and there was never a subdivision plan, so it didn't lock that into zoning, but the site plan that we approved don't, doesn't meet our current regulations. Do we wanna re-approve and continue that site plan even though it doesn't meet our, our current regulations?
Well, that's where we had contacted Mark Brokowski, and he's determined that they are in fact grandfathered, because they did the preliminary subdivision during the solar, the solar moratorium.
Well, they did it during the moratorium, not prior to the moratorium.
But the site plan was done prior to the moratorium going into effect.
With a site plan.
Right.
Okay.
And that's how we ended up to where we are now.
So if the site plan runs out, they're no longer grandfathered, and is, is what I'm saying.
That is correct.
So if we don't approve this, then-
If we don't approve it, then they need to follow the new regulations. That's kinda what I'm thinking.
Yes, cause the site plan approval runs till May first, two thousand twenty.
Okay, so if we have till April to decide, let's find out if they're willing to change some things around to-
To meet, and by then, they may decide they wanna put batteries in also, so-
So I'm saying, before we do this prematurely, let's look at what we're approving and see if it's really what we wanna re-approve there. And if it's what we really wanna, want to do in there.
Okay.
That's my opinion anyways.
Adam here. If I, if I may, Attorney Todd Broderam, I've been the attorney for the project for three years or so that we've been, we've been at this. We do have complete grandfathering for eight years. That's what Brokowski indicated.
Eight years?
It's, our subdivision froze the zoning. The whole issue with the moratorium.
The subdivision froze the zoning of what it was prior to the freeze, or of what it was at the end of the freeze?
I have to check and verify that, cause I'm an eight-year parent.
We went through this. We've gone through this now a number of times.
But I don't recall the eight years, that's the number that I-
That's the subdivision freeze, that's the subdivision freeze. He-
That's all the question is.
I wonder if I have the correspondence.
I'm not disagreeing, the subdivision freeze, the subdivision freeze is one thing, the site plan is something else.
The site plan was approved in, in May, May of two thousand and eighteen.
The subdivision freezes the zoning.
Sorry, no, I messed up the dates, that's what I was saying, sorry. May two thousand eighteen, the site plan was approved. You had your, you posted for your building permit moratorium sometime, I think in April or May of two thousand and eighteen. And then it was enacted at town meeting in two thousand and eighteen. So from May of two thousand eighteen to May of two thousand nineteen, the zone change that you effectuated was a freeze of no building permits being issued. And we've talked about this a number of times. There was no modification at that point of any dimensional requirements, setbacks, landscape, buffers, whatever, open space, whatever it might be. Until your most recent town meeting in nineteen, prior to which, we filed our preliminary subdivision, which essentially effectuates the freeze, followed on by our definitive, which we brought to completion. So it all is retroactive back to our initial site plan approval from two thousand and eighteen. So our very simple, you know, thought is, it's our May two thousand and eighteen site plan approval, which we're under currently, which goes out for those number of years, but we're up against this construction, completion deadline. And our position is, we couldn't have constructed it. You had a building permit moratorium for at least a year, in fact, it ran over because the May town meeting was pushed out. So it's even more than a year, so certainly the year extension is something that should be- So it's even more than a year, so certainly the year extension is, um, something that should be, should be issued, I think. A- a- anybody would look at it and say it would be, um, you know, almost incomprehensible not to issue that. So, that's our position, w- w- we'll do the year if that's the limitation, that's fine, I know I requested two in the letter. I'm, I'm not sure where, where the restriction is, that you can't do more than one year.
We only allow one, I think it's in our bylaw, right?
We only, we have allowed one year extension at this.
Yeah, I mean, when I talk, and I talked to Randy about this before, I mean, honestly, my, my position is, it, it would be that, you know. Because of the moratorium, the year essentially has to be granted, you know, we, we couldn't have constructed in that period of time. So, the, the extension is just linked to the moratorium.
So I remember our last meeting, we had a, uh, you, you had a call with, um, with Bill.
It's Mark.
With Mark, Bill, Mark, yeah.
Mark, yeah.
Um, and that correspondence you got from him, or did you, did you get a, or did he just confirm what he wrote in the, in the previous letter?
He confirmed it, because they received the, um.
Okay, so had we.
Site plan approval prior to the moratorium.
Had we made changes to, had we made changes in that meeting to our zoning, the people that had filed, that, that's why there was a big rush to file plans prior to the meeting.
Everybody before the.
Cause they didn't know it was gonna happen.
Before the moratorium.
So, okay, I, I understand, I got you, okay, okay.
I mean, they will have to come back, this is zero pointer, anyone else, if they just choose to add batteries to the part, you know, recycling.
Yeah, right, yes.
So maybe if the moratorium was ordered differently?
Um, yeah, well, if we had not done a moratorium and we had changed the zoning to, you know, have setbacks of ten thousand feet from property lines. All those people that had filed prior would have been exempt from those regulations, but since we didn't, we just did a moratorium. It, it basically said, no building permits can get built, but that didn't mean people couldn't submit claims, so, okay, thank you. I understand.
I mean, we just wanna, I mean, the reason why we changed our zoning is because we wanna, we wanna keep the town safe, so it's not like we're trying to just be an ass, to be, to just be a jerk, right, we just, we really.
No, I know, I think the moratorium, the idea was, you know, we need some time to put some proper regulations in place and, I think that's what, I think that's what happened.
But we'll, we'll, um, we'll see you back when you're putting in batteries, so.
So should we, do we gotta approve this, inside, I'll make a motion when we approve this, one-year extension.
My second. On my favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Stay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. You wanna get six one A since he's here, the parcel release?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we just need to recommend whether the town should wanna buy this property?
So.
Taking the liability, taking all those trees?
The six one A parcel release, um, we just have to discuss if there's any reason why we should want to not, the town to buy this land and just have it sort of.
Make a motion, rerecommend the town re-release the property.
Second. On my favor.
I.
Aye.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm walking away, that was six one A.
Yes, we.
Yeah.
Now that has to be for the slot.
Yeah, that, yeah, that they release, but we didn't look at the business.
Thank you. I thought that we'd have done that earlier, maybe after, I wasn't paying attention. We have an A and R? Yeah.
Yes, um, this is actually an A and R that was approved by the planning board and, uh.
What were we gonna redo it?
They didn't file it. Signed and everything, so nothing has changed, except for what had happened, is it dawned on somebody that they never filed it. And, uh, then they came back and said, well, you know, we just want the planning board to sign that, I'm like, well, no, it's not that simple. You know, the planning board is gonna have to just vote to approve the A and R and then sign it, which, you know, I said, we didn't feel that there's an issue or anything, but the, the date on the plans has changed, but nothing else on the plan has changed. So, you know, to make sure we do it properly.
Right, I don't think the legislature will take it after so long, right?
That, that is thing, it's the, uh, well, actually. This, oh, no, the date of the, they changed, the engineer changed the date of the plans, 'cause it dawned on somebody and they never filed it, so he printed out a new one. And when he did, he put a revision date on it, because he printed out a new plan, that, yeah, we actually just went through that, they, they, the registry actually does not have a time limit on filing an A and R.
Oh, really?
Really?
Yeah, but because he did a revision.
Yeah, they didn't match the original plan, the one that was filed by the board.
So they should just file their own, right.
It's a bylaw.
So do we have to, we have to make a motion?
I make a motion to do it quickly and sign it as soon as.
Second.
On my favor.
Aye. As you can see, we've been getting all crazy out of it. Oh.
It's like I was the weak one, huh?
Frozen, it was frozen. You got a window there?
Yeah.
Yes, there's a wind advisory tonight.
Wow.
Trees and, and the lines and all that.
We, we have our generator in, let it come, let it come.
We're sad of the.
You're a dragger, we're all coming over.
I, I.
Your house has electricity, you said that himself?
I pray the boy.
I gotta tell you, still, but it doesn't work with them.
You better work your list.
I will go to a lawyer and I will get papers served, if I don't have a generator in June. It happened.
Is that it? No, it kicks on and everything automatically?
Yeah, cool.
No, I don't have that one, I don't have that kind.
It's not everything.
No, I don't either, either kinda have to hook up once.
You have to hook up, what's the switch over?
Yep.
I have a Coleman stove.
And it works off our tractor. So you have to start the tractor.
That's what I use. I cook, I cook with a Coleman stove.
You have one of those too, no, like the gas one, like the camping stoves?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, a pellet stove that runs off a car battery, so that, that works too.
Even, we, our, our gas stove, we have, we have like propane, it runs the electricity, we just have to use a lighter than, and it's cool.
Nice, okay. Nope. I don't feel like camping inside tonight though, so.
Yeah, it's just too.
You can come over.
Yeah, big party at your house.
I suppose we can talk.
You'll be well.
No, I don't have any political.
Bring the dogs over.
Oh, that's right, okay. My, one of my physical therapists, they're Polish. Christmas tradition delivered, she was telling.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I cooked all finished, you don't like that?
My sister loves the ball. Straight after boat. American Airlines.
Boat sounds cooler though.
Yeah, it really does.
Sorry that I had that in mind.
Oh, that's okay.
Um, so that's done. We have the RFP?
Yes, I, everybody received a copy at the last meeting, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go through them.
Yeah.
I mean, I have my opinion on who I think would do, of the two choices that we have, who I think, my recommendation would be, but I mean, it is choice of the board.
I, um, does anybody, I, I thought there was a clear, it was very, very clear, on, because of the, the limit, um, on the CMR PC. It seems that we get a lot more for a lot less money.
Yes.
And there was no limits, so, um, on, like with the G, with the mapping.
Correct.
On the, on the, on the.
Yeah, that's mapping.
On, on Bobowski's estimate, it, it, there was like limitations on all these amounts.
Right.
And it was exactly at the fifty and.
Yep.
Right.
The, um, the CMR PC was just, it just gave us.
Yes. It's such a bigger scope.
And what's interesting is that, remember our original estimates were up to a hundred and.
Yes.
Um, when we were calling people, everybody said a hundred, so CMR PC came back, is it like thirty-nine or something like that?
Yes.
So that's huge, and I think.
Yes.
That, I mean, I already feel like we saved the town a bunch of money.
I agree.
Um, and it helps, you know.
Put, put a little credit for the planning board.
I honestly.
For all the money we're spending.
Just based on my short experience here and everything, I think, uh, CMR PC's gonna give us a lot more.
Oh, absolutely.
Personal service, where Mark Bobrowski, I just believe he has a lot on his plate that it, we're, you know, we're not gonna get the same.
Yes.
Well, that and.
Quality of service, just because he's.
CMR PC has a bigger pool of.
I was just gonna say that, yes.
Four years.
And they've done this a thousand, yes.
From different areas and everything.
And actually, in my dealings with them, that's the thing, is they, they personally might not know of something like.
But here, let me connect you to someone else.
If you have, but they know of somebody who could help you with it, which I can get key.
Yep. Exactly, yeah.
And they gave a great presentation when they were first, um, pitching it, if you will, they came in and told us just the scope of what they could do and the timelines and the fact that they have so many different resources. That it, I don't think it would be possible for one individual to have as many resources as all of these people.
And they also have their legal review part, as, as part of it, so it's.
Yes. Right. We're automatically almost, and not that nothing against Mark, but it's just, this seems like a better fit for our town, yes.
And again, it saves a, it saves a good amount of, of money.
Yes. Right.
So, um, I mean, it makes sense that.
I'm gonna, can we use our credits?
Do we use that for that budget?
No, we, we get credit for doing the meetings.
Actually, did you just get that email, they, they just sent one out today about, uh, doing stuff we're getting, so I.
The meeting's now, yes. Oh, I didn't see the one about, no, I didn't check your emails today.
Yeah, it's, I think, you're actually making.
Like, do we get some sort of a bonus for saving money, like, at least like a gold star?
Something.
Tiara.
No, I think that, I mean, so I don't know how we proceed with that, but if we, we would, I think it'd be great to get that started.
Yes. Yep.
Um, at least some schedules, I know that would, they also, they do pu- meetings for the public and they usually hold them like lap, we did the master plan, they get them downstairs.
Downstairs.
And I don't, I, I think with all the new, all the stuff that's going on in town, I think we'll have actual people who show up for this.
Yes, I agree, lots of people.
Cause the master plan's like fine, so more people show up for that, but I think even with this, there's a lot of stuff happening.
Agreed.
And, once the consultant comes on, I think that we also get some, um, residents too, that might wanna be sort of, cause they'll be like.
No doubt.
Is it, is there a separate committee that sort of we create?
We could.
Or, or who wanna focus, because look at, like, for example, like Lori Deggan, like, how valuable would she be on a, on, I mean, I, I guess showing up, cause I mean, she, it's, it's like she's part of us. Um, anyways, but.
She brought Paul weather, just in case it was.
I, I think, I think you probably have a better, even if the residents kind of just give you the information you're already looking for, and in fact, to include the residents in the park.
Correct, as much as.
It's a feel-good thing that the town feels like they're involved, you know, so I think it's, actually, to have like a little community outreach, so that the town feel like they're involved in the project's process and everything, it will be.
Yes.
Agreed.
Cause community outreach is always a, I mean, an open meeting, but I think we have actual meetings, but we could think about the forming of a, of a, a working group.
Yes.
Cause I mean, I don't, we all love each other so much, we wanna see each other all the time, but it might be, it might be interesting to have a little working group with people who, um, just have that.
Really?
You've got a talent pool out there that you don't, I'm not even sure we know of the resources, and when something like this comes in, people from all sorts of different walks of life come in. And they can be invaluable to projects like this, because you might have engineers coming in, you might have, not planners, but you gotta have people that you don't realize do X, Y, Z outside of town.
Even business, businessmen that know, you know, the, the trends and stuff like.
Yep. Of course, no, so I, I agree.
This, I've had, like, you know, this has been coming up and people are kind of aware of it, but people are also looking at different things that can be done in town.
Yes.
And like, why is it zoned this way, you know, it, people have different ideas, they kinda think outside the box, where you're kind of looking at the same thing all the time, so you don't.
Yes. Exactly.
Like, oh yeah, that's a great idea, I never thought of that, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Definitely, you do, exactly. Couple meetings, we did have with all the peoples, we got a lot of different ideas that were outside the box, but were very interesting.
Yeah. And sometimes a really crazy idea leads to other, like, reality ideas, so it's nice to have a, you know, a bunch of.
Yes. Or maybe they come from a town where this has been done before, so rather than reinventing the wheel, they're bringing valuable knowledge in, so.
I, uh, one of the things, I, just, in my town, we get definitely work on the, I think everybody's aware of that, we definitely have to, like, get a little bit better on the definitions, you know, you don't have things that are so broad.
Yes.
Right.
And then, of course, everybody, we've already discussed about the agricultural zone, that that might not be appropriate in town.
Right.
But this, I've had a lot of people asking me different things about the Route twenty corridor and how to.
Weed ice.
Come up with better zoning for the corridor to, then allow more uses and everything.
I was broken up into residential, commercial, community business, industry.
So this is the one.
This is jumped around, so my opinion is not.
This is why the master plan is such a, a, they mesh so well, so now that the funding, so we got two years of fifty thousand dollar funding for this. So, I'm not sure if it's, if, we need to discuss this further and probably put it on the agenda more, I'm whether we should now get the master plan going at the same time. And let's start with the zoning, but kind of parallel track that, that's a lot of work for us though, that's the thing, but, so. The timeframe might, let's not have a bunch of extra meetings, let's just have, make the timeframe longer, so it's a parallel track and maybe. So when people are saying, why are you changing this bylaws, because we have, and we discussed the master plan, and this is really the direction that the town's going in, so.
Yep.
We wanna change our bylaws to get to this, to, to get to here.
So change the bylaws with the master plan and.
At the same, right, together.
Well, if, if you're gonna use CMR PC, you know, it's, you know, I don't know, we're gonna have to do another RFP for the master plan again, but.
Most likely because.
On the same note, if you have the entity working on the big picture, it'll, it'll all flow together.
Exactly, that's right. Yep.
And they have lots of resources and everything, and we're helping keep employed on top of that, so they're gonna give us some quality time.
Yes. Exactly.
So, and I don't, I don't, we have to ask Donna if that's something with that, I mean, cause it specifically says for bylaws, ca- because it's both capital, can we, can we just do the master plan instead? Do we have to go to town meeting for that?
I'm sure we have to go to town meeting.
Well, can we go to the finance committee to, to, to switch it from bylaws to.
Well, we've got another town meeting coming up in a few months, so.
Yes, and that might, which is, cause it's time, so that might be exactly to, to.
I think that'll be at the moment or. And, and if, if we go down that track now, at least we'll have a better idea about what's going on.
But we're not gonna ask for any more money, we're just gonna ask to change it, or maybe we will ask for the full, cause the master plan's much more expensive than the bylaws, maybe we'll ask for. Master plan money, well, we'll figure that, we'll get, but something to think about in our, while, while we're getting there.
Sure.
Okay.
Can we have a formal vote on that? Oh, so we, can we have a formal vote on the CMR, for, for selecting CMR PC, we'll reach out.
So did somebody make a motion that we?
Not yet.
No. Yeah, we'll get back.
I move that we, um, yeah, use CMR PC for doing the diagnostic consultant.
I'll second it.
For the zoning bylaws.
The zoning bylaws, I'll second it.
On my favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Would you like to let CMR PC know?
Yes.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. I'll see him tomorrow night.
No.
There's a meeting tomorrow night, but I'm sure they want something in writing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll put something together for them, you want me, I'll put, I'll run it past you, passy, make sure you're okay with it, and we'll send it out.
Cause you win.
Huh?
You win. You win.
Yeah.
You win.
We never win.
You win.
Yeah. That's sure, it's to the point.
She'll put the giant check at their door.
I'm going from the credit union, maybe know the big ones. Yeah, just put it on video.
Exactly.
Let's post it. Just keep this on.
Can I get one of those for me?
Yeah, the next time, I think there are, you know, that position, well, as many other things, the new town administration starts February third.
I heard he was in the building today?
Was he? I did not see him. Was he? I did not see him.
Didn't see him.
But he's been here a couple of times, but I.
Oh, he has one.
Probably filling out paperwork.
Uh, no, cause he, um, I happened to stop down at the fire station, and he was doing a tour of the fire station today and everything, and getting the lay of the land, and.
The chief brought him around one day and, you know, give him the grain tour, and I talked to him for a few minutes, he's actually been on the planning board, so he's.
Oh, okay.
He's, he's got plenty of experience.
Huh?
He's got plenty of experience.
Yes, the chief said we're a colorful planning board, just so you all know.
Yeah, I. Colorful?
Colorful.
The chief said?
That's a good attitude.
I'd take it as a compliment.
Yes, I'll take that as a compliment, I'll put the spin on it, it's a good thing.
That's right. Yeah.
Clearly wanna start wearing colorful clothing too. He has some Hawaiian shirts.
Pastels next time, guys, pastels.
Checks, checks, they need the checks and stripes and everything.
Alright, so I think that, is there anything else anybody else needs to discuss, or?
Actually, I wanna bring this up, and this is only because I asked you to kinda let this one slip through the cracks, and if the board doesn't wanna deal tonight, I understand, but, um,
Two block away from that one.
Miss, Mr. Reardon had, Tim Reardon, he's now painted his road, plants most of the trees and everything, in any ways, he had
Yes.
gone through Graves Engineer for a bond reduction, and he had done it in Sep- December, and I, we haven't had a meeting, and I said, yes, I'll take care of it, and I just
Right. Right.
in one ear and out the other, with the holidays, and then he called me today, I'm like, oh, I didn't take care of that, so I don't know if the board wants to discuss this tonight, um, or.
Can we, cause it's not on the agenda, I guess that's, that's.
No, it is on the agenda, oh, no, it's not, no.
Is it, no?
No, it's not, it's other business, unknown time, posted.
Other business, so.
But still, in case any residents.[1608.44]